Good evening, everybody. I now call to order the November 6, 2023 Special Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. The meeting is now in session. This meeting is taking place at the Old Donald Middle School Cafeteria at 211 Cushing Street in Stoughton. Town meeting reps, please make sure you have checked in with your precinct chairs for attendance purposes and to receive your assigned clicker. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. It is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise if you are able and stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'm going to introduce the Chair of the Stoughton Disability Commission. She's here to make sure people who need assistance with the listening devices. She'll explain that. So Charlotte Mullen, the Chair of the Disability Commission, please come up here. Just to be transparent, Charlotte and I are married. She is my better half, so here she is.
Guilty as charged. All right. So with this large space and having to move out of the high school for this meeting, being able to hear the meeting may be challenging for many folks. So the Disabilities Commission has arranged for some listening headsets that can be used. They couple into the sound system. You can adjust the volume as need be. So a couple of people did email and say that they wanted them. They already have them, but we have some additional units if anyone is interested. And I'll be over to the side for a little bit and would be happy to give one to you. Please return the units after the meeting tonight to the moderator, and he will bring them home. And we'll have them back for you again on Wednesday night. And one other, just small piece, as you're thinking ahead to the annual spring meeting, I know we have to get through one meeting first, but if there are any accessibility concerns or things that you would like to see, please let us know, and we'll be working with the town officials to make sure that there's not only the assistive listening systems, but if people have difficulty seeing the slides, things like that, we'll work on all of those things for the upcoming meeting. And you can email us at disabilitycommission@stoughton-ma.gov.
Thank you very much, dear. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on here. Next, I'd like to introduce our guest. We have State Senator Walter Timmeltie in the audience. Senator, you want to come up to the microphone here and say a few words? Senator Walter Timmeltie.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. Thank you to each and every one of you tonight. It's my privilege to be here in attendance with you all, so thank you. And a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and again to our Select Board, led by our Chair Deb Roberts, our School Committee, led by our Chair Catherine Weiss, and of course, our Finance Committee. I'd also like to extend a sincere thanks to our town clerk, Stephanie Carrara, our Assistant Clerk Kelly Johnson, our Senior Clerk Samantha Rigo, and all the hardworking staff here in town government in Stoughton that works tirelessly to make town meeting a success each and every year. Most importantly, I would like tonight to thank you, the residents of Stoughton, for the great honor of serving as your state senator. I will never forget that I work for you. It is my privilege to serve this town, and I am proud to be a part of the Stoughton delegation in partnership with our Congressman Stephen Lynch, Representative Bill Galvin, and Representative Ted Phillips. We truly are a team, and we consider this job of working for you folks at both the State House and, of course, Congressman Lynch down in DC as our privilege. I also come before you tonight as the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security in the Massachusetts State Senate to speak on some items that have come before the state legislature this session that I believe will positively impact the Town of Stoughton and our entire region. For instance, this year in Chapter 70, which is the key funding source for public elementary and secondary educational institutions, and the funding that supports our school operations, including teacher salaries, textbooks, and transportation, will have an increase of $604 million over fiscal year 2023. It will double minimum Chapter 78 from $30 per pupil to $60 per pupil. In Chapter 70 funding, Stoughton will receive this year $26 million, $439, $366. Moreover, unrestricted government aid, UGA for short, is a program that provides funding for general government services such as police, fire, and public works departments. And to each and every department and who is here with us tonight, thank you for what you do and your leadership. Through this program, Stoughton will receive $3,828,229. In addition, Chapter 90 is a program that many of you are aware that provides key funding to municipalities for implementation of capital improvements on local public routes. This includes bridges, sidewalks, and roadways, amongst others. With Chapter 90, Stoughton will receive $773,017 in Chapter 90 funding. Through amendments that I have filed in the FY '24 budget that have carried the day, money will be coming to support various entities in the Town of Stoughton. I would like to add that this money would not be coming to the Town of Stoughton without the support and advocacy and collaboration of my colleagues in the House of Reps, Representative Bill Galvin and Ted Phillips. Each and every amendment that I have filed in the State Senate has to be concurred on in the House of Representatives, and the air advocacy for the Town of Stoughton and our partnership is instrumental in achieving any success that we were able to achieve. Specifically, these amendments, to name a few, will bring money in terms of expenditures to support the great work of Oasis, to combat substance use disorder. And I'd like to thank Stephanie Patton and everybody who volunteers for Oasis for their great work, for supporting and trying their very best to support the families of folks and the individuals who suffer from substance use disorder. Money will be expended for equipment for the Stoughton Fire Department, and I'd like to thank our Fire Chief Carol and our Assistant Chief Jack Magcomber for working with me on this amendment that I filed that made it across the goal line. I thank Chief Carol and, of course, Assistant Chief Magcomber and each and every member of the Stoughton Fire Department for their support and their partnership in securing this amendment. Moreover, money will be expended through amendments that I filed, one particular amendment that was successful, regarding Stoughton School System. Superintendent Baez and I just talked on this earlier tonight. This particular amendment will support upgrades for security hardware in the schools of Stoughton School District. And again, thank you to Superintendent Baez and your teams, doctor, thank you. But this will help make our students safer within the Stoughton schools. Furthermore, two amendments that I filed in our FY '24 budget exercise were adopted that will support individuals in both the Town of Stoughton and throughout the Commonwealth. First of all, I filed an amendment that was successfully adopted to support, for $300,000 to support a municipal grant program for firefighter cancer screenings throughout the Commonwealth. Now, I filed this amendment in conjunction with the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts and the Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts. These cancer screenings will enable departments to apply for grants from the executive branch of state government and pay for early cancer detection through screenings of our firefighters. Obviously, our firefighters and our police officers put their lives on the line for us each and every day that they go to work. This is one way to help protect our firefighters. And it obviously, it's the right thing to do, it's the moral thing to do, to detect cancer early in our firefighters and get them the treatment that they need. It is the right thing to do. Also, as you know, firefighters want to work. They want to be at work. This will help firefighters get early detection and healing early and treatment, potentially. So this is, to me, it's the right thing to do from a moral standpoint, to protect our town employees and our firefighters who do so much for all of us, but it also, it makes sense as well, because it will enable our firefighters to get the treatment they need, God willing, and get them back to work, which is where they want to be. Also, I filed an amendment seeking $1.2 million for the On-Site Academy, which is a nonprofit residential treatment and training center for critical incident stress management. As one of our fire chiefs once said to me, "Some of our folks who go to On-Site Academy through the performance of their duties as first responders and as corrections officers sometimes witness things that no human being should ever see." This helps treat the mental disabilities and illness that arise from what our first responders and corrections officers witness on the job, help get them whole and healthy and heal them. This is a training site, the On-Site Academy in Northern Worcester County, and in my capacity as the Chair of the Joint Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security, I filed this amendment, again, in conjunction with the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, the Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts, and also Mass Coalition of Police. This On-Site Academy will continue to work regularly with our first responders and corrections officers to make sure they get the proper care and help they need when dealing with critical stress incident management. With that, I'd like to thank each and every member of this town, citizen of the town and each and every member of this town meeting, for the privilege of working for you. I will never forget that I work for each and every one of you. It is my privilege to be here tonight, and again, please never hesitate to call me or email me. My number at the office is 617-722-1643, and the email address is walter.timmeltie@masenate.gov. And I think many of you, from looking out, have my cellphone number. If you don't have my cellphone number, feel free to stop by. I'll be here in the front row. But again, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I wish you a great town meeting and look forward to seeing everybody very shortly, and I hope Stoughton athletic teams have a great success in the playoffs. Thank you all. Thanks, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you, Senator Timmeltie. All right, moving on. I'd like to introduce our town elected officials. I know everybody's kind of spread out a little bit, so I'm just going to give out the names, maybe give a little wave to everybody. Our Chairperson of the Select Board, Deborah Roberts. Vice Chair Steve Cavey. Scott Carrara, Select Board Member. Lou Gieto. Joe McCrisky. There we all are. Tom Kalter, our Town Managers over this side. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. And we also have Mary Jane Martin, interim Town Accountant, down here on my right. Stephanie and her crew has been introduced by the State Senator, volunteer, introduce them a little bit. Stephanie Carrara, our Town Clerk. Kelly Johnson with the Town Clerk's Office. Samantha Rigo. Tom Arturio is admin in Town Clerk's Office. Juan Anokian's on this side, the Chair of the Finance Committee. Catherine Weiss, Chair of the School Committee. She's out in the audience. Thank you, Catherine. Ms. Francois Morissette, Vice Chair. I don't know if she's here this evening. No, but she's our Vice Chair. Lindsay Kreckler. She's out there in the audience. Armando Barboza. Is he here? He's way in the back. Thank you for coming this evening. And our School Superintendent, Dr. Joseph Baez. Joe, you're out there. Thank you, Joe, for coming this evening. And also, the final thank you to our precinct chairs who volunteer these positions and donate their time. Juan Fox, Precinct 1. George Delinsky, Precinct 2. I'm just going to quickly go down the list. Matt Callis, Precinct 3. Julie Gieto from Precinct 4. Carmel Drews, Precinct 5, and the Deputy Moderator. Christine Yakabachi, Precinct 6. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7. David Sheen, Precinct 8. And also, I thank all the town meeting reps for coming this evening. We appreciate that. Thank you all. All right, now we have to determine if we have a quorum to proceed with the special town meetings business at hand. I'm going to ask each precinct chair, again, for a count. If you're ready. You ready, Stephanie? From the crew. Precinct 1, Juan Fox. Nine, Precinct 1. Precinct 2?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, that's George Delinsky. Precinct 3?
Twenty.
Twenty? Matt Callis, twenty. Precinct 4?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, Julie Gieto, thank you. Precinct 5?
Twelve.
Twelve, Carmel Drews, thank you. Precinct 6?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. All right. Precinct 7?
Eleven.
Eleven, and Precinct 8?
Eleven.
Eleven.
What's nine? You didn't call out Precinct 11.
What was that again?
Three, three, five, ten.
Three people, three extra. What precinct?
Eight.
Eight. So we're fourteen at eight. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, fourteen at eight. Thank you. Let's take a moment for the clerks to tally up the number of town meeting reps present. One thirteen. We have currently one thirteen in the cafeteria, and we only need eighty-five for a quorum count. We do have enough that matches, that meets the quorum, and furthermore, one thirteen. So we will continue with the town meeting business at hand. All right, next business is test the clickers. Do you want to put something? Okay, Stephanie, go ahead, and we can explain how the clickers work. Whatever's comfortable. When do you come up, right here?
Good evening, everyone. We tested the clickers all over the room, myself and my staff. If you get the battery with the X on it, don't panic. Just keep clicking it. You have to kind of wake these up. So if you end up having a problem and it's really not working, just quietly come up to the table, see Samantha, and she'll reassign a clicker for you. But you shouldn't have a problem, because they've been tested, all batteries have been replaced. The next one, if you click it and get the circle with the line through it, there's no poll up there, so stop pushing it. Sorry. And then, of course, the last one is if you're voting and you can't really see the screen, look down at your clicker, and it'll tell you how you're voting. If you vote number one, that's yes. If you vote number two, that's no. And number three is abstain. Always know that if you have a problem, just, again, quietly come up to us, and we will assist you any way we can. Thanks. And precinct chairs, if you'd like, you can put your clicker containers on the table, and at the end of town meeting, town meeting reps, you can just drop off your clicker in the container, which will be on the table where the notifications of the extra amendments to motions are. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie Carrara, our clerk. All right, I'd just like to introduce our Town Council, Ryan Winter. Okay, we're going to test our clickers right now. How do you want to do this?
I'll put a poll up.
Okay, poll will be up on the screen.
Yeah.
Is it up there?
Yeah.
All right, I'm told the test was successful. Thank you all for using the clickers appropriately. All right, I'm a little rusty this evening, so once I get rolling, we'll be moving a little faster. All right, next up, the procedural motions. These are the motions that we do every town meeting to help us do the business efficiently during town meeting. I will ask Deputy Moderator Carmel Drews to read each motion one at a time, and after each procedural motion, I'll ask for a second, and then we'll do a voice vote on each motion. Okay? Okay, Carmel, go ahead. Is the microphone working? We're just going to check that for you.
Is it working? Oh, it is now.
Here we go.
It does not have an on switch. It just magically happens. Thank you. All right, number one, move to dispense with the reading of the special town meeting warrant and the return thereof.
Second. Who's seconded? Can I just see? Okay, we'll take it quickly up here. Okay, seconded by it quickly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next, Carmel.
Move to act on articles as printed in the special town meeting warrant.
Second, I need a second name. Just shout out your name. Joe Soars? Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Carmel, go ahead.
Move that amendments or substitute motions for an article be considered only if in writing and be delivered in writing to the moderator 24 hours in advance of the session at which the motion is to be made. Motions to be emailed to the moderator at bmulon@stoughton-ma.gov and a copy to the town clerk at s carrera@stoughton-ma.gov.
Is there a second? Eric Coleman? We getting those names? I hope we are. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Carmel?
Move that no reconsideration of any article take place until the last article has been completed at the special town meeting.
Second?
Second.
Second, Bob Combe? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Last one, Carmel.
Move that the special town meeting does not take up any new business after 10:30 PM.
Second.
Second. George Delinsky, I heard you seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There's one no. I heard one no before. The ayes have it, unfortunately. All right, thank you, Carmel. Just a little note from the moderator. I need your assistance in reducing the amount of paper that we put out on the front table for both the special town meetings and annual town meetings. Beginning next May in 2024, I'm going to request, I'll put it in an email to everybody, but just want to give everybody a little shout out to this evening, that if you still need hard copies, I'm going to ask you to request hard copies in your emails. Otherwise, I'm going to assume that the documents posted on the virtual table in electronic format will suffice everybody. Okay? If they're not out there, let's say, just 48 hours in advance of the first night of town meeting, I'll make sure they're on the table. But if they're out there, say, for a week, I'm going to assume, unless you email me your requests, there won't be any hard copies for you. I think that's something we should all agree to. At least a nod at the head, it's fine with me.
Second.
All right, thank you all. I'll remind everybody as we go to the next, to the annual town meeting in May. Just a quick recap and summary of our process here this evening. Each article is going to be advanced by the town moderator, providing the article number and the page number. The article's motion is read by the Finance Committee Chair if the Finance Committee approves that in a positive vote. If not, someone else will be making that motion. Then the Standing Committee reports are read. The presenter of the article has up to 10 minutes to present the article. Then is followed by the technical question period, two questions per a town meeting rep. Then followed by a pro and con debate. Town meeting reps have up to three minutes to provide their pro and con comments. Then followed by a summary by the presenter of the article, up to three minutes, only if needed. We'll see how that goes, and then we'll have, the town meeting reps will be voting using the assigned clickers. All right, first up, let me just explain the consent agenda one. This bundles the collective bargaining agreements, one, two, three, four, and five. And also, we will have a presentation, a short presentation on the articles, and unless any town meeting rep, if they want to, can hold, like you hold the budget during annual town meeting, on an article number. We can, that means to take it out of the consent agenda, and we'll discuss and debate that article or articles separately. Does everybody understand that? Any questions? I think it's, we did this before at the annual town meeting for a consent agenda. This will hopefully will speed up a little bit. Okay, can I have a motion by Juan Anokian on the consent agenda, please?
We can accept consent agenda one as written and approve Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Article 1, collective bargaining dispatchers union. Article 2, collective bargaining police patrol union. Article 3, collective bargaining SPAM. Article 4, collective bargaining police superior officers. Article 5, collective bargaining library.
Second, who seconded it? Elliot, thank you, Elliot. Dee, would you like to make a presentation on it? If you want to. Sure.
I just want to clarify what, oh, Deanna Chatsko, HR. I just want to clarify something before they take the vote on the consent agenda that might answer a few questions. Some people may have read the article and noticed that the motion has some different wording. You'll be voting on the motion. There were a few typos in three of the articles as far as the fiscal years, but they have been corrected in the motion. So the motion that you're voting on is correct wording. It was too late to fix the article wording, because it had already been approved by the
Thank you, Deanna. All right, anybody have any objections or want to take anything out of order there? Just raise your hand. I'll give you 30 seconds. Seeing none? Okay, at this point in time, we can go right to the vote, using the clickers. Town Council, no objections, correct?
No objections, sir. Majority vote.
Yep. Again, it's by majority vote, as listed in page 13 of your books. Go ahead and vote now. One yes, two no, three abstain. Okay, that consent agenda one, as a motion passes, one 10 yes, five no, one abstention. Thank you all very much. We're moving on. So that covers one, two, three, four, and five of those articles. On page 15, I'll wait for everybody to catch up, page 15, Article 6. That's supplemental fiscal year 2024 departmental budgets. Juan Anokian?
That the town vote to reduce the public health visiting nurse fiscal year 2024 departmental budget in the amount of $41,160 due to the FY 2023 revenues not attaining budget projections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
Eric Anderson.
Eric Anderson. Yeah, just shout out your name over seconds, just so the clerks can record that. I appreciate it. All right, can I have the FinCon report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 6.
Okay, no other reports are necessary. Presenter is Mary Jane Martin, interim Town Accountant. It's not working. Give us a moment there.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This article is going to lower the nurses' budget for fiscal '24, because their revenue in for fiscal '23 did not meet the estimated amount that we had. So by statute, it has to be lowered for '24.
All set? Okay. Any technical questions on this? Pat, please come to the microphone. One of the microphones, introduce yourself, please. Name and precinct number. And George, you're up next.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. My question is, I'm trying to look at this in terms of the broader picture of the VNA, and if I'm not mistaken, didn't we subsidize that at the annual town meeting? So my question is, what did we subsidize? And I apologize for not looking. What is the structural deficit, and what is it projected to be for '24 if we already didn't hit our goals for '23?
Can anybody answer her? Hang on a second, Mary Jane, your microphone's having a problem.
What was the deficit for '23, and what is it projected to be for '24 in light of the fact that we didn't hit this goal?
I'm not 100% sure. I'm not sure.
So we don't have fiscal '24 budget in front of us. There is a deficit, and town meeting voted it that way in support of the...
Do you remember the amount? I'm sorry.
I don't have the amount in front of me right now. What Mary Jane was saying about the statutory requirement, because it's an enterprise fund, you cannot forecast revenue in the following year that is greater than the revenue in the previous year. It's a statute that goes with enterprise funds. Really has nothing to do with our FY '24 or '25 budget. It just has everything to do with an adjustment, because the revenues in '24, '23, were lower than what we budgeted in '24.
So there was a deficit, it's just we can't recall?
There is absolutely a deficit, and if you recall, that was a lengthy discussion at town meeting with the cuts in Medicare. It will be a deficit, and it's really up to the will of the members, town meeting members, whether you choose to continue to subsidize that deficit or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delinsky. Please rise to the microphone, state your name and precinct number, please.
George Delinsky, Precinct 2. My question about this is the $41,160, is this going to affect staffing at all?
In the town meeting book, it shows you the staffing adjustments that have been made. We've made two promises to town meeting. Is one, as long as town meeting wants the service, we're going to provide it. service, we're gonna provide it, and number two, we're gonna provide it at the least cost. So the answer to your question is, yes, it, it has affected staffing, administrative staffing, not nurses.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, George. All right, anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, let's move right into pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Raise your hand. Seeing none, it looks like we're ready to vote. This is on article six, which is page fifteen. Please vote one, two, or three, yes, no, or abstain. Thank you all very much. We're turning to page, to article seven, which, uh, that's actually gonna be a motion to withdrawn. Mr. Kavy, could I have a motion to withdrawn on that? To dismiss?
Moderator, move that we withdraw article seven, uh, deposit stabilization fund.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by George Dolinsky. I'm gonna do this by, is it up here? I'm gonna do this by voice vote. Town councillor, do you have any problems? Nope, no problems. To make it quicker, voice vote. All those in favor to have article seven be dismissed, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Article seven passes. I only heard one no. Okay, the ayes have it. By voice vote. All right, that brings us to article eight on the bottom of page sixteen. Mr. Juan Anokian, please make the motion.
Town vote to appropriate five hundred and ten dollars to pay prior fiscal year's unpaid bills, JANCO, and that to meet this appropriation, five hundred and ten dollars be transferred from the FY twenty twenty-four fire department budget.
Is there a second? Second by George Dolinsky. Okay, presenting is Mary Jane Martin.
So every so often, we have bills that come in after the fiscal year is closed, so this is just a bill that we had that would be funded from the twenty-four fire department
Okay, thank you, Mary Jane. Uh, any technical questions? Seeing none, any pro and con debate? I'm sorry.
It's not before.
Oh, I'm sorry, that makes sense, thank you very much. I must be showing my age here a little bit. FinCon?
Finance committee voted twelve to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting article eight.
Thank you, Mr. Anoki, no other reports to be heard. Okay, again, technical questions? Hearing none, pro and con debate? Hearing none. Let's proceed to voting. Use your clickers, pick them up, and vote one, two, or three, yes, no, or abstain. Yeah, the town clerk just wanted me to remind everybody, it's a nine tenths vote because it's a special town meeting. So nine tenths vote to pass this thing. Stephanie, you can do the math on that, okay? Okay, go ahead. All right, motion passes by at least nine tenths. One eleven yes, two no, zero abstentions. All right, article nine is also gonna be withdrawn, but let me just give you a heads up here. The articles that are gonna be withdrawn or dismissed this evening are article seven, nine, eleven, which is the solid waste by law. Article eighteen, the property located at seven sixty Washington Street. Article nineteen, property located seven ninety-seven eight oh nine Washington Street. And article twenty-two will also be dismissed implementing the town of Stoughton Communication Program. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, six articles that are gonna be dismissed this evening, which is good news. So article nine, uh, Mr. Kavy, could I have a motion to, uh, dismiss?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dismiss article nine, ADA projects.
Is there a second? Seconded by George Dolinsky. By voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Okay, just a few no's, the ayes have it. I declare that a vote. Article nine is dismissed and withdrawn. All right, we're gonna move on to article ten, which is the purchase of thirty Porter Street property for town parking. This requires a two-thirds vote and is on page eighteen. My notes tell me that Mr. Joe McCrisky is gonna make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate fund, uh, appropriate or transfer from available funds in the treasury if any sufficient sum money to purchase thirty Porter Street for town parking or take any other action relative to. It is requested by the town manager and asserted by the Board of Selectmen on September fifth at an estimated cost of four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, the proposed motion reads, yes, yeah, okay, yeah, I was going through everything, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred and forty thousand dollars to acquire by gift, negotiated purchase, or eminent domain land together with improvements thereon located at thirty Parker Street, uh, Porter Street, uh, being the property as further described and deeds recorded on the North Fluck Registry of Deeds, Book two six four two four, page two twelve, consisting of approximately zero point seven, zero seven one acres more or less, together with improvements thereon for general municipal purposes, including municipal parking lot, and to authorize the select board to enter into or exec, executive any other offices, uh, offers license temporary or permanent easements, agreements, or instruments as may be necessary for such conveyance, and to expend funds which may be necessary for professional engineering, architectural, legal design, and/or site investigation, testing services, site preparation, and/or demolition, installation, and all other incidental related costs on such terms as the select board deems appropriate, and, and as funding thereof to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under pursuant of the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other enabling authority.
All right, need a second? Who seconded? Bob Cohen, precinct five. All right, need the standing committee reports. First up is Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted zero to thirteen to accept and recommend to town meeting article ten, the motion failed.
Thank you. I'll read into governmental relations. They voted six to zero to recommend this article to town meeting. Municipal operations, Cynthia Walsh, you want me?
Stay right there. Thank you, Ed. Municipal operations voted two to five, two yes, two no, to approve article ten. Motion failed.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. The presenter on this is Mark Tisdale. Microphone needs to be on.
It's on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe Mr. McCrisky would like to say a few words before I get started.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Ladies and gentlemen, the select board offers this article and further work to work within available funds to work smarter, not harder, and to work to manage the town's, or hard-earned tax dollars in a responsible manner. If you recall back in twenty nineteen, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, uh, the select board, as a majority, I think unanimous, voted to end the project known as the former public safety building. Because looking at the plans and the dollar amounts, it had reached sixty-five million dollars, and it still wasn't the final dollar amount. At that point, at sixty-five million dollars, we didn't even have a piece of land that could take that building at the time. The board decided to end that process. We abolished the building committee, and we empowered our town employees, engineering, building, procurement, the town manager's office, engineering office, to come up with a plan that was workable, affordable, and met the needs of the fire station. After some time, a year, we had those plans. We knew what we wanted to build. We brought it to town meeting. Town meeting overwhelmingly supported the article. It then went to the voters for an override, and the voters as well overwhelmingly supported the article for the fire station. That building is now a reality. It's being built as we speak, and it will be, at this point, below budget, and will be done at a good price for a great building. This is another step in doing just that, is to use the taxpayers' money in a responsible manner to put an addition onto the police station that will suit their needs. Now, many of you know, we, we did a, a study that took all the needs of the fire station and the police station into the feasibility study, back when we did it in twenty twenty. In that, and you'll hear from the police chief tonight, in that plan, the police chief brought forward her needs for the additional space that was needed to aid the police department in keeping up with technology and the services and the demands on law enforcement at this time. We needed a lot of different room. The, uh, we had.
Uh, Mr. McCrisky, one minute. What's the point of order? Please rise and state your purpose for rising. You have to use the microphone, please. Come forward. Identify yourself, please, Mark. Name and precinct number.
Mark Struck, precinct four. I was wondering what, what this has to do with the actual, um, motion that's before us.
Hosting the purchase of that property. He's speaking.
This is for parking lot, not a police station next to town hall.
There's more, Mr. Struck, there's more to come when I, throughout the presentation. You will get everything that you need, believe me.
I gotta give him a little latitude, okay? Just a little bit, but.
Are we gonna stick to ten minutes to the presentation for both sides?
Let me, uh, Mr. Struck, let me, first of all, respond. Give me a moment to respond. It's gonna be ten minutes total. If there's somebody else speaking, it's gonna be a total of ten minutes. Okay, I'm gonna give him a little latitude, just a little bit. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your patience, everybody. Go ahead, Mr. McCrisky.
So with that, to speed up a little bit then, is the, the request here tonight is the police department needs extra room. It's cheaper for us to put an addition onto the police station, which they need, I believe, somewhere around ten thousand square foot additional in the area. You'll hear that from the engineers. And that the money that would be needed is gonna be looking at seventeen million dollars versus building a new pla, uh, fire, uh, police station. To do that, we would like to purchase thirty Park Porter Street, which is the old house that sits adjacent to the parking area at town hall. We would use that to free up the parking on Rose Street. We own the lot beside the police station on Rose Street. There are municipal vehicles on that lot that need a place to park. So our plan is to bring those parking, those vehicles over to the additional parking spaces that we will create at thirty Parking, uh, Porter Street to free up the rest of the parking lot on Rose Street, and that's where the addition to the police department will go because we're gonna need substantial parking there for police officers with the expansion because those parking spaces that are on the police property now will have to move over, plus the building itself. So this, again, this is gonna be working smarter with your money to put an addition on property that we already have and we own. We don't have to go out and look for anything, we can start immediately on that process. So with that, I would recognize the town engineer, assistant town manager, Mark Tisdale.
Mark, you have the remaining, uh, how many, how much time do we have left? Four minutes?
I have four minutes left?
Yes.
Okay.
Moderator?
Yes.
Just a point of order, uh, people are gonna remark that have nothing to do with the presentation. Mr. Tisdale's presentation is targeted to ten minutes.
No, it's presentation on the article. So if you break it up to one person versus the other.
We didn't.
I thought presenting was, turned it over to Mark Tisdale first. If I could rewind the tape, I said, Mark Tisdale, you're presenting.
So, Mr. Moderator, regarding us saving twenty million dollars on this investment, you want Mark to crunch it into four minutes?
Well, the total presentation time was ten minutes.
So be it.
Okay. My apologies that there was some misunderstanding, but I thought it was pretty clear in the beginning. Mark, I'll give you five minutes, okay?
Thank you, Bob.
I'm just trying to be fair to the town meeting reps. We, we sat through a presentation, and now you can, you can continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, good evening, everybody. It's great to see you tonight. I am the lucky one presenting the article. Um, with me tonight is, uh, obviously, the police chief, uh, the owners' project manager from our fire station and public safety building, Taylor McDonald, and our assistant town engineer, Craig Horstfall, who's helped out with the plans. Uh, tonight, I'll keep it simple. What I'm gonna talk about is factual information from my standpoint. Uh, as you all know, I don't get into the whole political thing, none of that stuff. All facts, uh, property characteristics, I'll explain the article funding, the proposed use of the property, and overall benefits to the town. I won't talk about anything to do with purchase and sales, as I was not involved with that process. I won't talk about the appraisal, since I'm not an appraiser, I'm not qualified to really talk about that. All right, moving, moving on, the backup information for this article is on page eighteen, um, and page ninety, and page one eighty-two is where the map is. Page one eighty-two is where you see a map very similar to the one up above here. The property characteristics are mapped fifty-four lot two twenty on a Cessar's map. Uh, the whole lot area is thirty-three hundred seventy-nine square feet. There are no wetlands on the property. It abuts town hall to the southwest. Uh, contains a single, currently, it contains a single-family dwelling with gravel paved areas and landscaped areas in front. I'll move on to the article funding. The article funding's for four forty. It's broken down as follows. Uh, three ninety-nine for the property acquisition, five thousand for environmental assessments, and approximately thirty-five thousand for demo and graveling the area afterwards. Uh, the proposed use of the property, focusing exactly on this property, as you can see, right next to town hall, allows you to construct about fifteen to twenty compliant parking spaces. Uh, the drive aisle on the side of town hall, as you, as you can see, the, the purple box is where the parcel we're talking about is, right where the house is, it's near that number thirteen. In that area, if we acquire that piece of property, we can construct fifteen to twenty compliant parking spaces. Right now, that's near the area next to town hall where you have those four parallel parking spaces, two of which, if you look at this map, part of the parking spaces are on the property we're acquiring. So if that property ever got developed, most likely, we wouldn't have those two parking spots. The other two are near a dumpster, uh, which are non-compliant. If you need to go unload the dumpster, you wouldn't be able to get there if two cars were parked there. So essentially, you get a net of about fifteen to twenty parking spaces when this is fully designed. Um, you know, I'm just gonna kinda skip, skip to the chase here, since I only probably got a minute or two left? Two and a half minutes? All right, I'm doing pretty good here. All right. Um, overall, this plan, as you saw, the, the right side of this map, you saw at town meeting last year, it's the town hall master landscape and traffic improvement plan. Uh, as you can see, acquiring the property to the left, we can blend parking spaces in with that. Everything will fall seamlessly, the landscaping, the traffic flow, all works together, uh, won't be segmented. Uh, be, be kinda nice, I think, personally. Uh, overall benefits to the town, we'll be fiscally responsible with this project. Uh, obviously, uh, if we take these fifteen to twenty parking spaces away from the municipal parking lot where they are now, currently, there's eight inspection vehicles that are parked over there, and there's about five to ten employees that park in that parking lot. If you can move to the next map, uh, Sam, thank you. The municipal parking lot is just north of the blue box you see on the screen. The blue box represents the building envelope where the building will be expanded. It says ten thousand square feet. It can be twenty thousand square feet if you put a second story on, or thirty thousand square feet if you put a third, third story on. It's an envelope. As you can see, by building out the police station, there's a need for seventy-six parking spaces, taken from the need study in two thousand nineteen when we did the feasibility study, uh, for the public safety building. The blue box at the top says seventy-three parking spaces. That's because we can fit seventy-three parking spaces in what a ten thousand square foot building envelope, uh, which pretty much meets the needs of that parking analysis. The only problem is, in that parking lot, there's roughly fifteen to twenty cars that are parked there, eight of, seven to eight of which are inspection vehicles, the others are the five to ten employees, which typically, one of them is me, that's why I kinda know the numbers. Otherwise, all the other parking spaces are vacant and not used at all. Um, there's about ten spaces that are used for police, police purposes. Uh, cutting right to the chase, since I know I probably got about, what, maybe a minute now? Oh, twenty seconds. So essentially, if we're gonna expand on this building, on this piece of land here with a, with the police station, um, it's gonna equate to a twenty to twenty-five million dollar renovation expansion project and meet the needs of the town. If we don't do this, then we have to go through the RFP process that we've done with the fire station project, uh, previously, and have to acquire another piece of property, um, and then eventually, uh, spend about forty to fifty million dollars on a brand-new building when we could renovate this building for, for twenty to twenty-five million. Am I good? Okay.
Can I have my mic? There we go. There we go. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mark. You'll have time for a summary at the end. All right, thank you for understanding. Uh, Carolyn Campbell, technical questions?
Yes, um, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. Um, I had one technical question, which you answered. My next technical question is simply, nothing with this article has anything to do with the police department and adding on to the police station at this time. Am I correct? So, and that whole, anything to do with the police station will have to come before this town meeting at some point in the future?
Correct.
So basically, we listened to a presentation about the police station, which has nothing to do with it. All I understand is you want to buy parking, you want to buy the building for parking, to tear down the house, to use more parking for Town Hall, which may or may not be needed, and you're saying it's needed because you wanted to, um, build, extend the police station, but the only thing we're considering is the, to purchase the property right now and nothing to do with the police station?
Yeah, I'm gonna assume that's, that's a question, so-
Is that, is that, am I correct, Mr. Moderator?
What we're trying to do here is plan for the future?
I understand that you're trying to plan for the future, but the point of this article is to purchase that property for parking, and that's it. So whether or not we ever do anything with the police station, we're gonna purchase the property or not, and that's the, I just wanna make sure I understand what our article is about, and we're not voting on anything to do with the police station, so could we not discuss the police station going forward and just discuss whether or not we wanna buy this property?
Well, leave it up to the moderator's discretion, but yes, we can try to focus in on just buying the property.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, Eric Coleman, were you up next, or? Yeah, Mr. Coleman, you were up next, and then followed by Molly Cochran. Mr. Coleman, please introduce yourself, name and precinct number.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. I'm looking at this map, the Town Hall and Police Station overview, and where you see the number 13, if you look a bit to the left of that, there's a big open area with some- You with me? I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, where, where there are some cars parked, but there's no building there. Uh, is that town land, and is that a possibility of getting that by eminent domain and not having to tear down a building?
Mark, could you-
I'm gonna, thanks, Eric, for the question.
Do you know where it is?
I'm in the way.
Uh, so you're referring to the top left of the screen here?
Yeah, underneath where it says, uh, the heading.
Right, tho- those parking spaces are actually allocated for previously-approved projects. There's a private developer that actually owns that parking lot. So if you were to eminent domain that, it'd be, um, you know, a process you have to go through, like, any eminent domain process, but we would have to replace those parking spots somewhere else in the downtown area for the developer.
This, that would be for lesser costs, presumably. Well, that's not a question.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next up, Molly Cochran, please identify yourself.
Molly Cochran, Precinct 2. My question, because the town is considering buy, you know, creating a new parking lot, is what are, what is the planning with respect to putting in EV charging stations in that parking lot, which is something the town really, really needs?
I think that's a great question. Uh, thank you for asking that. I think as part of any project like this, for this new police station project, we would certainly have to plan for moving forward in the right direction with EV stations. I can't guarantee that, but through the design process, I'm sure it's gonna be a huge talking point. That's where we're going right now. I'm sure a part of your climate action plan is gonna make that a solid point, and it, and it should be.
Okay, I mean, I just wanna say, is there room within the budget that you've created to discuss that? Has, has that been discussed seriously up to this point?
We haven't created the budget for the police station project just yet.
I'm not talking about the police station, I'm talking about that-
I'm sorry.
There's gonna be a brand-new parking lot, 'cause you're buying a, a, a piece of real estate, tearing down the home, putting in a 15 to 20-person parking lot. That's what's before us. What is the plan with respect to putting in EV charging stations to that parcel?
I understand you now, thank you. Um, essentially, what we'll do is go through this process like we require any other developer to do in town. Uh, we will draw up the plans, we'll permit the plans through the planning board, and whatever boards are necessary to, to approve this, including the select board. Uh, through that process, if EV stations are required, they'll come through that process.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Molly. Next up, Sandra Souza, please identify, identify yourself, please.
Hello, Sandra Souza, Precinct 1. Um, I do agree with the previous speaker. I feel it's kind of a bait-and-switch, parking lot and now police station. However, I understand you're using this as a stepping stone, so I'll ask my question based on that. You said that there were town vehicles that are currently parked in the police station. How many?
It's approximately seven.
And they're inspection vehicles?
Yes.
So, we own all this other property, they can't park elsewhere?
Uh, where, where would you be referring to? The other town parking lots?
Yeah, I mean-
So in previous discussions, it's a good question, it's a valid-
The old bank that is now the, you know, recreation department has spaces there.
So the two spots that are, are the closest would be the recreation building-
Mm-hmm.
And then the Railroad Avenue parking lot, those are municipal. And then you also have the depot, uh, building. I would not take up the depot building-
Correct.
-parking spots, because if we don't know what we're gonna do with the depot yet. So if we're just pushing our problem over to the depot now, then it can become a problem later, and we're gonna push it around again. Um, right now, the walking distance from that secondary parking lot is approximately 400 feet to the Town Hall parking lot, and walking to the Railroad Avenue and the rec center is about a quarter mile. Um, so that could be done, but, um, you know, in a rain, s- snow event, uh, walking through the downtown for municipal employees or people doing business in town, uh, it's, personally, it's not a, really a fear adjustment, I think.
Okay, so they would have their private vehicle, they would park it where their inspection vehicle is and then take the vehicle?
You, we all park our, our municipal, our cars in the municipal parking lot in back of Town Hall. So if we were gonna go park in that parking lot, we would have, the municipal parking lot's always full. I mean, for those of you who are familiar with that parking lot in the morning time, it's always full. So when I drive by, I don't find a parking spot in that parking spot, in that parking lot, so I have to continue down the street to this municipal parking lot and park there. If there wasn't parking spaces there because of another project that would occur, the police station project, for example, uh, you would have to park in Railroad Avenue or the rec center and walk that distance.
So, this, this diagram I see is 13 spots? Okay, I was just trying to get numbers, 'cause I only need 10 spots.
Is there a way to keep these microphones on? Excuse me. Can we keep these microphones live? Thank you. Sandra, you've asked your two questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Quigley, I think you're up next. We saw his hand raised. Go ahead, introduce yourself, please.
Ed Quigley, Precinct 2. Um, I'm probably not the only person confused here. There are 93 pages of backup information on this article. The word "police station" doesn't appear once. I think that's what's causing the confusion. I think sometimes we're our own worst enemy. A year from now, somebody's gonna bring up the police station, and they're gonna say, "Oh, we discussed that back in November of 2023."
Mr. Quigley, I could ask you for a question.
My question is, if we were going to be talking about the police station, why weren't we given that information in the packet in the 93 pages of backup information we will give up?
Okay, thank you, sir. Would anybody be able to answer that? Anybody would like to answer that?
That's from Mark, 'cause he was engaged in a conversation. Because, the, the reason it was not in the package is this is about buying that property. I don't think the town will be looking to buy that property if it weren't looking to expand the police station. But the matter before town meeting today is, does, do the members wanna buy that parking, that property to be used as parking? Would we be presenting this, uh, if we didn't have an expectation to solve the issues that were raised by the study committee on the, the needs assessment of the police department? No, we wouldn't. But that study is out there, their conclusions were very real, and yet the town has been unable to act on any of those issues that were raised several years ago. So when this property came up for sale, uh, and Mark was in the process of developing a parking plan for the entire Town Hall property, uh, it became possible then to use the parking adjacent to the police department, because another space came up that we never expected would come up for sale. So it is, I understand the point, it's well-taken. This issue is not about the police station, but it's the only reason that this issue is being brought before town meeting. There has been, uh, this is about building a parking lot. So I, I hear your point, to, to mix the two issues up can complicate it, but to the moderator's often point that he makes is we need to stay on point. The point is, do you wanna build a parking lot there? The why is something everybody in the room knows about, but perhaps we need to stick to the purchase question and of the property.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, Pat Colburn, please identify yourself.
Mr. Anokian's been raising his hand, and since he might answer my question, I don't mind if he goes before me.
Well, I wanted to answer the question. It was asked by a previous speaker why that information is not in the book. The book's assembled by the finance committee, and that information was never received by the finance committee, which is why the information's not in the book. I was just trying to answer the previous speaker's question. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Colburn, Precinct 4, and that was indeed my question. I had COVID, and I wasn't able to attend the hearings, but I watched, and I saw nothing about the police station. So I also feel like we're not really being open and honest about what we're doing here. As far as the property itself, my concern is that, when, again, when I watched those-
Pat, Pat, do you have a question?
I did, I just asked one, and now I'm asking my second.
Okay, my second, go ahead.
And I am keeping it on point. Um, the, the appraiser wasn't able to enter the building, so I think that was a big reason why FinCom said no. So my question is, why are we paying over appraisal for a building that's so dilapidated and unsafe that the appraiser couldn't even get inside?
Okay. Could anybody answer that, please?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, whenever I hear the words "open and honest," uh, I wanna point out, we had four public hearings about this opportunity as it's related to the police department. So it's not like it was kept in the darkroom. It came before the FinCom, it came before the Board of Selectmen, it came before two government committees, all of them televised, and it was all about the police department.
It's part of this article, though, I don't believe it was. That, that was my concern.
No, it was to explain the article, ma'am.
Okay, but this, when we, there were hearings on this article, police wasn't mentioned.
Ladies and gentlemen, hold on, no cross debating.
No, I'm just, I mentioned this early, I'm just trying to-
Okay.
I feel like it's inaccurate, but regardless, why are we paying over appraised if an appraiser, unless it's changed, could not even get in the building because it wasn't safe?
So, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, the appraiser was instructed, the only interest the town has in the property would be to tear it down. So there was no need to get in and inspect a dilapidated building. Uh, in, in response to your second question, uh, in every real estate transaction, there's an appraisal, there's an asking sale price, there's an offer, and there's a meeting of the minds, or that, that there's no deal that happens. And in this market, the offer is often considerably higher than the appraised value, as anybody that's bought a house recently knows. So, there, there is a seller who has got an asking price, and there is a, there is a, a host of potential buyers that have made different offers. We can, uh, match that price, we can walk away, we can adjust or amend the price, but there's just a matter of asking price and selling price, just like in the private sector market.
Thank you. I'll be voting no, I appreciate it.
All right, Pat, thank you very much. Next up, I have Becca Marksen, please identify yourself, please.
Becca Marksen, Precinct 7. Um, well, I had two questions, but my first question is, uh, should the town manager recuse himself from this, as he did in the FinCom meeting, because he has a relationship with the owner of the property?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Town Manager.
Respectfully, I won't make recommendations, having throughout this whole process, I only provide information when asked, and just for the record, I made a full disclosure to the clerk's office about my relationship with Mr. Anastas.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
I think that answers your question.
Yep. And then my second question is, so the article says to appropriate a sum of $440,000 to acquire by gift negotiated purchase or eminent-domain land together with improvements. So, we all know this property has zero improvements on it since it was bought in 2009 for $150,000. So I understand that it is, you know, 2023. So my question is, if you look at the comps in the back of the book, the comps are for actual, like, buildings or, you know, land with houses that are actual houses. So how did this appraisal come in that we would spend up to $440,000 for a dilapidated house? Like, how did those comps happen when the comps are with real houses?
Could anybody answer that, please?
Again, Mr. Moderator, just some factual responses, no opinions. Uh, our procurement office, uh, chose the appraiser through the, uh, public bid process. Uh, the town has no relationship with this appraiser. As you look through that 100-page document, and I'm sure most people have, uh, it makes clear that the, um, comparison number two and the comparison number five were the two most realistic comparables, uh, to this property in general. Uh, and just for the record, the only value to us, the only value to us, it's a condemned building that needs to be torn down, is its proximity to Town Hall. A better piece of property on the other side of town does nothing to address this parking plan created by Mr. Tisdale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up is Lisa Lyons, please identify yourself, please.
Yes, hi, Lisa Lyons from Precinct 2. And you might have to bear with me, Mr. Mullins. As a town meeting rep of my constituents, I believe the biggest concern we have is for the towns, seniors, and hard-working taxpayers of this town to make the wisest spending of their tax dollars. That being said, I think in order to have a complete understanding of where our tax dollars are going and why, we might have to consider that something might be being purchased for a police station that against another scenario might save or not save money. So my question is, to whomever can answer it, and I'm gonna bring up the Armory, because I've heard that in previous discussions. Why, and I would like to maybe hear from, um, Chief McNamara, if the powers-up here feel that's the best person to answer the question. We, we have to think, we can't just look at something minutely, we have to look at the bigger picture with regard to budget savings. Could somebody please explain that to me?
Well, let me, let me just kinda remain on focus here. The question is the purchase of that property.
Correct. And in the larger scheme of the budget, which this entire book is about, can somebody please explain to me how this scenario of purchasing this land, I believe Mr. Coulter just alluded to a piece of the puzzle, I would like to broaden it to the police department, because that is why this article is being brought to town meeting reps. Again, we represent the constituents, which are the taxpayers, and in order to explain to the taxpayers where your hard-earned dollars are going.
Well, one minute before anybody answers that. I'm gonna ask Town Council, the motion on the floor is what I see before me. There's nothing in there about the police department. Correct me if I'm wrong. I just don't wanna get sidelined a little bit. Try again.
Mr. Moderator?
I think you're right.
So, it's a scope question, and scope is-
We cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
Is this working now?
No, you can't.
We stopped recording both ways, and it wasn't working in either direction.
Do we have instructions for this gentleman? That's okay. Go ahead, try now.
A scope question is within your broad-
Talk into the mic. Shh.
What's the problem out there?
We cannot hear him.
Okay, he'll try one more time.[1748.13]
Can you, you want this mic?
No.
He's fine, though.
I keep asking if it's on, and I'm told it is on. Can you hear me?
Not so much.
Speak a little louder, Brian, if you will.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
The scope of debate, which you will allow, is within your sound discretion, and while the plain language of the article concerns the purchase of 30 Porter Street, the why the town is being asked to purchase this property could, if you see fit to, include discussion of the police station. That is the why question. Now, that's a policy matter in terms of how you are going to allow or not allow debate, uh, on town meeting floor. However, if the why, that is the motivation for this article being in the warrant, is something that you deem relevant, you could allow debate to include those background facts as well.
Thank you, Mr. Town Council. I will, my, my judgment, allow some discussion on the Police Department. Is that the ultimate motive, I believe?
Thank you, and I, thank you on behalf of my constituents as well.
And the town meeting reps, they want to discuss it.
Of course, of course.
Go ahead, Lisa.
My question's asked, does, do you understand my question, either Mr. Tisdale or Chief McNamara?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you for the question. So I have been the chief for a number of years now, this is probably the sixth iteration of trying to do improvements for the Police Department, and it is necessary for our department to move forward with the needs from our needs assessment that was finalized in 2019. As, as the Select Board and Mr. Select Board Member McCrisky explained earlier, is that they, they made a choice in 2020, which was the right decision for this town, to separate from a public safety building and ma- and make improvements for the, for the most needed at the time, which is for a fire station. Our needs did not go away, they are still there and still necessary for our department. This is a fiscally responsible plan, which is the first step. If we can buy this piece of property and put this parking lot in, we can move forward for the next step, which is to begin the process of, with the architects that we were using earlier, uh, for the police station, and making those improvements that are needed for our department, for the public safety, for this community.
And may I ask my second question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I believe it would be to Tom Coulter for informational, budgetary reasons only. Whom has looked in, has someone looked at the other alternatives for the police station? So my question is, is this in fact the most economical way to address the police station needs in terms of the budget and saving tax dollars versus the Armory or the other properties in town we heard about?
Thank you, Lisa, for that question. Uh, we have one of our contractors of choice here today that Mark interviewed to ask what a, the estimated cost of an addition would be versus new construction. And we believe, based upon that conversation today, the cost of an addition, which seems to make sense, would be about half of what it will cost for new construction. The paramount question that I had, and again, this is for informational reason, when this opportunity was before us, was is this where the chief thinks the best place for Police Department is? If she said no to that question, this article would not be on the town meeting floor. Her response to that question is what made us pursue this opportunity. So perhaps to the moderator, uh, maybe that question should be asked of the chief.
Does that include the renovation of, let's say, the Armory? This would be more economical than that renovation?
Lisa, you, you asked your two questions.
Well, it's a continuation of that same question because I need the full answer, and I don't feel like I got the full answer.
I'm sorry, someone else can ask that for you, but two questions.
Well, I'm just saying, that was not a complete answer, and you're not allowing it.
Lisa, I think I'm being very fair, you know. Thank you very much, though. Okay, next up.
Mr. Moderator, if I may just clarify-
McNamara, go ahead, please.
So again, for a number of years, we've looked at a number of properties in the, in the community. One of the costs that you're not looking at for the Armory, which is not an ideal location, but we could make it work if we had to when we were looking at it for a public safety building. You have to tear down a very large building up in the Armory. It is not something that we can use or refurbish. We are looking to make an addition and remodel some portions of the current station, which is not quite the same, would be reduced significantly compared to building a brand-new building. And if we had to acquire property, which is what we looked at for a number of pieces of property in town, that would be a cost as well.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Banus, could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Peter Banus, Precinct Two. We've heard some great buzzwords tonight, fiscal responsibility. We've heard all these wonderful things, all right. All, I, I, the thing that makes me come here, first of all, there was no signatures in the book that we received from the Select Board-
Mr. Banus, question, though.
Yeah. The question, my first question is, how much over budget is the fire station?
Is the what?
Fire station. Because we're talking about fiscal responsibility.
This is not, this is, no, I let the police station get involved here, but this motion, I don't say anything about the fire station. I mean, I appreciate the question, but it's out of order.
No, we're talking about fiscal responsibility, Mr. Mullins.
You did, I'm going to have to rule you out of order on the fire station. I just don't want to go down that avenue right now.
Well, we-
You can answer that at a-
Okay, here's the last thing.
At a Selectmen's meeting at some point in time.
We had, we had a virtual meeting in, in the year of '21.
For what?
We voted, we voted virtually. No one expected the information within that December 6th, 2021 book that I went through, there were nine-
Again, again, Mr. Banus, you're talking about the fire station and the motion on the fire station.
I'm talking about the same, this is like a recap of what happened, all right?
I know, I'm going to have to rule you-
We have, we have-
Mr. Banus, I mean, all due respect, we know each other very well, but I'm going to have to rule you out of order.
Okay, so we have all the pages about the comparing the land, we had all the pages about comparing the two properties.
If you want to talk about this article on the police station, go right ahead.
Okay, that's all, everyone should know, it, it just seems sketchy.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, I have Elliot Hanson for us, then Mr. Murphy. Sorry, Mr. Murphy. Okay, why don't we step up, Elliot, introduce yourself.
This microphone is obviously made for short people. I am one of them. This, this parking lot here, there's 13 spaces at $33,000. Right now, you have a parking spot for the town employees at, near the Town Hall, which in fact, a lot of time gets used up by the apartment that's, apartment complex that's directly across-
Is there a question in there?
Yes. Is how, how are you going to make sure that this parking lot is used for that purpose? Um, I don't, I don't see $33,000 per parking space as a bargain, but, uh, is there any, any way to make sure that the, if this is for the town employees or the people visiting the Town Hall, that's what it's going to get used for and not some other thing?
Okay, that's your question. That's the question. Could anybody answer that for him?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Hanson. Uh, we enforce who parks in the lot as we speak right now. So through the town, um, administrator, they make sure that they have the plates of the town employees. So during the day, if there's anybody parked in there that is not, uh, registered with the administrator, we, we can enforce the parking. We've removed numerous people that live next door, I believe it's 19 Rose Street, when they park there overnight and they don't move the next morning for the Town Hall. So we currently do that. Every snowstorm, if anybody's parked in those lots, when the DPW is coming in to plow, we tow them if they haven't moved their cars. So we currently do that enforcement now. We would just have to continue it to another lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief McNamara. You all set, Elliot? Mr. Murphy, you're up next, please identify yourself.
Let me adjust the mic first. Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Uh, question I have, and I'm not quite sure of the exact number, uh, the MBTA parking lot, what, what is their daily rate? Does anybody know? How much? $4.
How is that relevant, Mr. Murphy?
Well, the reason why it's relevant is because-
And is there a question?
Yes, there is. If I can get to it, I'd appreciate it.
Be my guest.
At, when I first remembered it was a dollar a day, so that's where my numbers went to, so my number's going to have to be multiplied by four. But at five, a dollar a day times 15 is $105 a week, times 52, it comes out to $5,460. Let's multiply that by four, let's make that $20,000. Why don't we just reserve 15 spots out of the MBTA parking lot and give those to the town employees and give them stickers so that they know that those are reserved for the town employees? So at $20,000 a year, it's going to take 40 years to make up the difference of this building. That's question number one.
Would anybody like to answer that for him?
Thank you, Peter. It's a great question. Uh, just, just to recap your question, you're asking, can we allot so many parking spaces out of the, the Depot parking lot?
Correct.
Where the Depot is, there's 30 parking spaces over there, you're saying, take 15 out of that allocated to what we're doing here. So that was kind of what we went through before explaining, where you, you could technically do that, uh, but we haven't determined the use of the Depot. Depending on what we use the Depot for, it may need the full 30 parking spaces, maybe more than that. And if we have 15 of those parking spaces taken up because we move them from one spot to another, we may be pigeonholing ourselves.
Well, my, okay, um, I think I remembered my other question. I think you misunderstood my question. Thank you.
He's talking about renting from the MBTA parking lot where commuters rent spaces as opposed to taking spaces at the Depot.
Thank you for clarification.
Mark, would you like to, uh, answer that one?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's an option. We'd have to run the numbers, see if it makes sense for us as, as a town to do that. Um, to me, I'm not even sure if that's possible. We would have to discuss that with the MBTA.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And get an agreement established. They, they're very tough to get an agreement, uh, with. We've, we spent, what, four or five years, I think, trying to get the agreement for the 30 parking spaces that we have.
My other question, seeing that you have the map up here, I'm looking at the handicap spots, and what I see at number two, there's only two spots there, which is current. Out back, there's one spot out there. If you were to acquire this lot, would you be adding more handicap spots for the town?
Again, so just to clarify, this, this plan, as we presented at last town meeting, in this town meeting, it's a, it's a conceptual plan. The reason why I was saying 15 to 20 parking spaces is because we need to really fully survey and design and permit this like we do with other projects. For the Town Hall side, uh, we're going to go through a very extensive public outreach process. So everybody in this room, I hope, is involved with that. We want you to be proud of that project. Depending on what the requirement of parking spaces are for handicap accessible, people in this room may be saying, you know what, two's required, but we might want four. So we're going to go through that process and provide whatever the town wants for accessible parking.
That's the point I'm making. I don't think what you have up there is enough. Thank you.
All right, next up is David Laurie, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Laurie, Precinct Six. Through you, my question, I think, is to the Assistant Town Manager. Uh, there were two feasibility studies approved by town meeting over the past few years, and I want to ask questions on the two. Uh, one of them, I'll just start with, which is most recent because it's on the screen, which is the front of the Town Hall with the changes to the parking lot. So are you, is that feasibility study done to the point where you still think you need them, should you pick up the 30 Porter Street parking spaces? Because, you know, and I won't have to get into the context of that, but I think it's kind of obvious why I'm asking.
All right. That's a great question, Dave, I appreciate it. Uh, those parking spaces shown on this map, remember, this is a conceptual plan. We went to town meeting for funds to actually come up with a full design to vet this. So the final design is going to, going to look a little different than this. This is a conceptual plan based on GIS maps. Uh, the parking spots in the front, those are for visitor parking. Those are the ones where we're actually getting more parking spaces on the Town Hall side. The parking lot we're referring to is in the back here, that's where you get the 15 to 20 parking spaces. Two different uses, municipal employees, public at night, the fronts visitors.
Yeah, I think just to clarify, Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to know that you're moving forward with the front of the Town Hall regardless of the Porter Street?
Correct.
They're separate, they're not, one doesn't help the other?
Correct.
The other question has to do with the feasibility study, since the material makes it relevant about the, you know, we had the public safety building, and there was a lot of money and time sunk over years to develop options, one of which was to take Rose Street and fix it instead of going forward with those other properties around the town of Stoughton to, to build. How far did that study go? Are there already designs in place for the Rose Street so that we don't have to, you know, take, it does, that it doesn't have to be such a hard project to kind of start from scratch and bring it to town meeting? I think that's why I'm asking is because how much time are we really talking about to get that going?
So through you, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Chief.
Mr. Laurie, um, the needs assessment was done and the analysis of what we need. Anything that we did when we were, was just schematic sketches for, um, presentation on, and where the town direction went, which, which was instead of putting an addition on Freeman Street location at the time for the Fire Department and an addition on 26 Rose Street for the Police Department, that was all it was, was just schematic. And then we moved to a public safety building. So we could use much of the needs assessment, but that's as far as what we previously did for the Police Department.
So in essence, you're starting from scratch?
Well, as far as schematic, yes, and design of a building, yes.
All right, that's my final question, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. I think next up, uh, before you, Jess, is Bob Cohn. Did you still have a question, Bob? Please identify yourself, please, then followed by Jess Minor.
I just want to announce that a lady stopped by my house to make sure I say I'm Bob Cohn. From Precinct Five.
Thank you.
The question I have, the owner of this property, has anyone talked to him? I did, I called the man up, very, very, very nice man. I've known him for years. The alternate is, what's going to be put up there? He owns the lot next door. I can see a beautiful apartment house, another disaster for this town, more traffic. The question is, has anyone talked to Mr. Anastas?
Can anybody answer that?
Boy, this is beautiful.
Yes, I-
Beautiful.
I, I speak to the gentleman daily. Not typically about Stoughton business, uh, but this has come up occasionally. Uh, he won't be heartbroken if this doesn't pass. He's got multiple options and multiple offers on the property. And just as a matter of fact, he had an offer a month and a half ago that was about $100,000 more than what he offered the project to us for. And as you know, Bob, he told you this, he put that on hold because he does love this town, he's been here for 35 years. So, listen, don't, it, however it goes, he's fine, but yes, I did ask him, um, about what he planned to do with it, and he will either sell it to a developer or he will develop it.
Absolutely. So what are we facing here? An apartment house in downtown? I don't think that was part of the master plan when we talked about apartment houses. And if we have any questions about that, look at downtown Brockton.
What's the question there, Bob?
My, my question here is, is, I'll, I'll give the other half on the quote part of this, but it's a shameful thing that we have a piece of property here. I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up at the next one. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Ryan Winer, did you have a couple, Lou Gino, did you want a couple, okay, all right. Okay, thank you both. Jess Minor, introduce yourself, please.
Jess Minor, Precinct Five. Uh, very simple clarifying question. If we vote this down, uh, would it prevent renovation of the police station, or would we simply need to find, uh, parking, new, a different alternate parking site for the current municipal employees?
That's a good question, Jess, yes, we would have to find an alternate spot.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, John Rock, will you still have a question? Who is John? Introduce yourself, John, please.
All right. John Rock, Precinct Three. My question is, can I move the question?
No.
For technical, uh, questions. It seems like we've beaten this thing to death.
We have beaten it, but, uh, no, but thank you for asking.
Okay, just checking.
Doesn't hurt to ask. Uh, next up is Lou Gino. I'm not going to take repeat questions from anybody, but, okay, if you want, okay, Mr. Gino, introduce yourself, please.
Thank you very much. Um, my understanding is that there has not been a design of the police station on the Rose Street property. And my other understanding is that, uh, when the public safety building was proposed, that in fact, the, the building was more than one floor. So the idea of having- So the idea of having all of the space for the police station may or may, that shown in the material we have, may or may not be true. Is, am I correct on those statements? That's question number one.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to answer Mr. Gieto's question. The Public Safety Building designed for the police part of it did have two floors. That is correct.
So in fact, all of the space may not, in fact, be used, and all of the spaces may not be used. So thank you for answering that first question. Before I get to the second question, the downtown is the overlay district, or was the overlay district, is now expected to have apartments, up to four floors, with the opportunity for a fifth floor. And the parking is to allow people to walk up to a quarter of a mile to get to their apartments or businesses. So that's just important to keep that in mind. The, also, the spaces that are in the rest of the Rose Street property, I believe, are listed as about sixty-seven, as the master plan currently indicates. So if we don't need to use all of that, we certainly would be able to, at no cost, provide the thirteen or so additional spaces. Is that not correct?
Would anybody be able to answer Mr. Gieto's question?
So if I may, through you, Mr. Moderator. We need the spaces. So currently, as Mr. Tisdale explained earlier, there's a portion of the current municipal lot that is currently used by the police department. And it is all along the fence line from Rose Street all the way to the Jersey barriers that is utilized by overflow currently for our police staff and our police vehicles. So to say that you wouldn't need that space, I would disagree.
So we may need to make sure that we have a full design before we are able to really answer that question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gieto. Carmel Drews, Carmel, you'll be the last one I'll take for technical questions, then we're going to move on. Go ahead, Carmel. Identify yourself.
Yep. Carmel Drews, Precinct Five. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Could the Chair of the Finance Committee provide a brief synopsis of the rationale behind their zero to thirteen decision against this article in the public hearing?
Mr. Nolken, can you answer her?
The Finance Committee had concerns with the cost on this. It was brought up what it costs per spot. There were also concerns about possibly other issues coming up during this. And this money does not include the actual paving of the lot either, doesn't include the actual lot. So there are a number of concerns. Cost was one of them. There was discussion about oil tanks during the meeting, several other things, environmental type things like that. But cost was a big, a big part of it. And it's, the parking spots were thirteen on this. So it was one of those kind of math things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmel. Okay. Moderator, it's a question. We're going to move into pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Mr. Cohen, I said, well, Becca's been standing here. Becca, why don't you move to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Becca Marks in Precinct Seven.
Let me just make a comment. Everybody has just three minutes, and we're going to be timing you. But go ahead.
Okay. I plan to vote no on this. I love the police. I really want you guys to get what you need. But at the same point, this just feels icky to me. And what would stop somebody else from letting their property go to pot and then expect the town to buy it? It just sends such a bad message, I think. So as much as I want, like, the additional things that are going to happen, I can't in good conscience vote yes for this. So I plan to vote no. And I think from all the other people speaking, I would assume a lot are going to vote that way, too. But I just want to say that it just, it just doesn't feel right. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Juan Fox. Please introduce yourself.
You just told me to stand up.
I'm sorry. Oh, Bob, will you up next?
Yes.
I didn't see you sitting down there. I'm sorry. Please rise and approach the microphone and state your name and precinct number.
Bob Cohen, Precinct Five. Let's go back to Steve Anassas, the owner of the property. Town manager said, and believe me, I know Steve, he's going to make money off of this. He gave us a break. Don't forget that. And what's going to be put there? He owns the building next door, too. So we could have a beautiful, nice apartment and more cars riding through the center. So the bottom line is, what are we going to end up with? We got a deal? It's up to you people to vote or I to vote the same way. I'm voting for it for the simple reason is, I don't know what the owner's going to do with the building. Yes, the building's dilapidated, but that's prime property, too. Prime property. So let's look at what's going to go there instead of a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Up next is Juan Fox. Please identify yourself, please.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. Juan Fox, Precinct One. Three things. One, this is a little out of sequence from the whole process. We're buying, or the attempt here is to buy parking spaces for a project that we haven't approved yet. So the process should probably be together because the project may not pass for the police station in the future. And therefore, we are buying a very, some very expensive parking spaces for, just for the town hall, which probably is not needed for the town hall. Number two, the house has not been livable for some years, and it probably should be condemned and torn down at the owner's expense. Therefore, the cost of the house that is being put on is like a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, probably should be zero. And therefore, should lower the cost of that. And number three, if he has a better, a better offer to sell to a developer or develop it himself to something that's actually usable, we probably, is probably a better, a better thing to have happen because it provides more taxes and it would be, make the downtown look a lot better. So I'm against this.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Sandra Souza. Please identify yourself again.
Sandra Souza, Precinct One. I agree with Mr. Fox. I think that if the property could have been developed this easily, it would already have been done so. It is already condemned, I believe. It probably has not been developed because of the cost of demolition, the same issues that the Finance Committee were all concerned about, oil tanks, environmental issues and that sort of thing, which are very, very expensive to remediate. I'm against this because the, the screen says town hall parking expansion. It doesn't say police station expansion. And I want more than anything for our police department to have viable housing. They need that to operate efficiently. I come from public safety work, so I understand that. But I don't think this was the way to do it. I really would have liked to have seen this in conjunction with plans for the police department expansion so that we could know that that project would be moving forward before we were to vote on this, and it could have been part and parcel together. I would like to know what the police station plans would look like. Could we do an entry-level parking garage, for instance, and then two levels built onto the police station, which may alleviate the need for an additional parking, you know, next to town hall and spending all this money on that? Those are questions that I have, along with more other questions, that this does not answer. And we can't get those answers because we don't have any kind of a plan. So because of that, I'm not going to be able to vote for this sadly. And again, the police station is sort of left in limbo. So I would just like to ask that next time something like this comes before us, that we have all the pieces put together so that we can make an adequate and a good evaluation so we can give the police department what they really need for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. No, you can summarize at the end, Mr. Town Manager. Brian Holmes, you're up next.
Thanks. Brian Holmes, Precinct Three. A lot of questions have been asked, a lot of things have been said, and there's been some confusion in the beginning of this, but what this is really about is this is about parking. This is the first step in a series, a logical series of events that's designed to stabilize what both the town hall needs for employee parking and what the police department needs in order to pave the way for a future project. For anybody who feels like they've been left in the dark or, you know, ominous terms like lack of transparency or sketchy, I would say to anybody in this body here that you're being informed about what the plan is way before the plan happens, so you have an opportunity to decide on that. You're being told what's happening here. So I would ask that you consider that this process is being open and transparent by telling everybody what the plan is now in order to move forward for the, you know, the stabilization of town hall employee parking as well as what we need at Twenty-Sixth Rose Street. I would just submit that the alternative is a lot more expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Peter Ventresco. Please identify yourself.
Peter Ventresco, Precinct Eight. There's a lot of talking going on about the pocket spaces, what do we need or not. This town desperately needs pocket spots. The whole of the square has been held up for over ten years because it lacked two pocket spaces. And somebody on the board knows that already. So we need the pocket spaces. So I'm going to give you a little history of that property, and let me take my glasses off. In the nineteen eighties, the town manager wanted to buy Thirty Porter Street for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Town meeting voted no. Forty-odd years later, the town wants to buy it again for four hundred and forty thousand. If we don't buy it now, what will this cost later? Okay. Now, the taxable valuation is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred for the land, a hundred and thirty-one thousand and one hundred for the property, with a grand total of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred. Okay. Taxable valuation is always below market value. If it weren't, then we wouldn't be able to afford to pay the taxes to the town. Now, the value of the property on open market all depends on the market and how much the buyer needs or wants the property. That's what determines the price of the property. Okay. Now, the town of Stoughton overpaid for two houses on Park Street for parking for the library. We, what was that?
I've got to give you a little more latitude, but you're kind of stretching it.
No, you let everybody else go all over the place.
No, I didn't.
All I'm doing is trying to make, make a point how much we spent for pocket spaces before. So this article is no different than the library.
Mr. Ventresco.
Yeah, you always cut me off, Mr. Mullin.
Don't cut me off either. So go ahead and try to get to the point.
Okay. I'm, I'm, okay. Okay, the town overpaid for property for two houses on Park Street for parking for the library. Buy, buy this property right now to beautify downtown because it's right next to the town hall. So I say buy Thirty Porter Street, Porter Street right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ventresco. All right. Next up, we have David, excuse me, Eric Coleman. Sorry, Eric.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. I'll be brief. I'm looking at this, this picture here, ten thousand square feet for the proposed building envelope. So is this, well, I can't ask a question, but I'm assuming this is a single story. And if it's two stories, then you're talking about five thousand square feet, which leaves five thousand square feet for parking and whatever else. So we don't need to buy the Porter Street property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next up is David Laurie. Please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct Six. And I think the, it's not that I don't appreciate the vision for the parking. It's not, you know, it has nothing to do with that. I think when I look at an article, I say, is it a good deal for the town? The only thing that spoiled this article, I think, was the appraisal. The only thing good about the appraisal is everybody gets a phone number of the best appraisal company in the world to do their own homes when they need to sell. That's about the only value in it. The, so because that appraisal was so botched, because it's trying to use highest and best value of a decrepit building that should have been condemned, and what I'd like to do is make a proposition. I'd like to, in order to change my no vote to a yes, what I suggest is take the same four hundred and forty thousand dollars and you let the, and because the article includes the demolition of that building, is to let the first money against that four forty go towards the complete work of demolishing that building. The, you know, the environmentals, all the work, before the seller gets a dime. And then whatever's left over, that, then the seller could have what's ever left over. And by the way, I'm also talking about a completed parking lot, not one that just leaves gravel. I'm talking about a finished parking lot. But that's my proposition. I would, I'd be happy to vote yes if the seller would be willing to do that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. Next up, John Rock.
Hi, everybody. John Rock, Precinct Three. I'll be brief. Move the question.
All right. Question's been moved and seconded by Cynthia Walsh. I heard her. Just to remind everybody, we're still going to let the presenter do a summary at the end here. Do you hear why? Because the moderator so declares that. Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the motion passes, cuts off debate. I got to ask Mark. I'll give you four minutes to do a summary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think you've heard all the details tonight. I don't have to go through any, any of the details. What we're trying to do as town staff, quite frankly, is just plan for the future. Sometimes an opportunity comes up at a poor timing standpoint. Obviously, if we're in the middle of designing the police station project, we're in another schematic design phase, and this came available, and we could blend both of them together at the same time, that's the perfect scenario. But sometimes you do have to plan a little bit of ahead. We saw an opportunity here. We wanted to bring it to your body. We don't want to tell you what to do. We want your input and your opinion, and that's why it's in front of you. Yeah, is it, is it the perfect, perfect puzzle we put together? Definitely not. It's not perfect. I'd be lying to you if I said that. But it, but it's a part of the puzzle that could solve a problem. It seems like in the past, and again, before I was here, there's, there was a house next to town hall, I guess, right across from the police station, that if we acquired that house at that time and built a parking lot back then, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So we're here to try to solve problems. One of the problems with the police station is there's existing, they need that whole parking lot if they expand. They can't utilize the whole parking lot if there's other town vehicles in need for that parking lot. We need to find another spot. This spot came up. We thought it was a great idea to present it to your body. We wanted to get your input and your opinion because this is literally the first step in vetting the police station expansion renovation project. It sounds like maybe this isn't a possibility. Maybe we look at other options for the police station. But, you know, we thank you for your time. We're, you know, we're sorry, truly, to town meeting if it wasn't the perfectly placed puzzle together. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Calder, you want to take the next couple of minutes?
No, just one minute, Mr. Moderator. Just one minute. I just want to speak to the process, and perhaps I'm reiterating, repeating what Mark just said. We're in the fifth month of the fiscal year. We're in November, and the fiscal year begins July first. This property came on the market in August. In a perfect world, Mark's right, it would have been great if we had a schematic design that was not in the capital plan at the time. We wouldn't even be discussing this if this property didn't come on the market as quickly as it did. So I just want to just explain or at least defend the concerns that it happened too quickly or it's, I think the term was icky. I just want to defend that had this not come on the market when it did, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, because it wasn't in the budget to do schematic design for the new police department. So please. So please, I ask, however you vote on this, I can tell you this administration will never do anything behind closed doors. There was an opportunity, we'll bring it before you. You are the governing body of the town. However you vote, we respect that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, the time is now to vote. Needs a two-thirds vote, as it says on the screen. Please vote now. One, yes. Two, no. Three, abstain. Okay, Article 10 fails, did not get a two-thirds vote. Thirty-five, yes. Eighty, no. Two abstentions. Thank you all for the participation in that. Article 11, Mr. Kaby, can we have a motion to dismiss, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A move that we dismiss Article 11, which is a solid waste bylaw.
Okay, that appears on page 19. By voice vote, all those in... Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you all for the second. By voice vote, only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 11, motion passes to dismiss it. I hereby declare that a vote. Mr. Murphy, you have a motion? You have a point of order? Please identify yourself to the body.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. There's other articles that are gonna be withdrawn. Can we do those all together? Have them all withdrawn like in one vote?
Is that what you prefer?
I would prefer I'd make a motion that we...
Yeah, let's just go on. That way we... We'll get to them. Same thing's gonna happen no matter what. All right, Article 12, on the bottom of page 19. Emergency medical services, life, safety, equipment, fire department. Mr. Watanoki, can I have the proposed motion, please?
Town vote to appropriate $147,975.99 to pay for the purchase of three cardiac monitors, two Lucas devices, and three ambulance stair chairs, with a credit for equipment and as funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under and pursuant to provisions of general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enailing authority.
Who seconded that? Lou Jito seconded that? All right, can we have the... Let me see here. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Vote to zero to one to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 12.
Thank you. Municipal operations report? Can someone hand Cynthia Walsh the microphone?
The municipal operations committee voted seven to zero, seven yes, zero no, to approve Article 12.
Thank you, Cynthia. The presenter is Chief Carroll, I believe. There you are, Chief. Please introduce yourself to the body.
Good evening. Michael Carroll, Fire Chief, Stoughton.
Go ahead.
All set?
Yes.
Good evening, town meeting reps and select board, Mr. Moderator. We come to you tonight requesting these three emergency medical service equipment. The request, I know, is probably a little different for a special town meeting, but we come to you as a result of after this previous annual meeting of having an incident happen where we had to do our own investigation along with OEMS and realizing that through this investigation that a lot of our equipment really was, at the end, or extended the manufactured years of service life. We quickly acted upon that, put out a policy, and we also requested that every piece of equipment in this, on our department, was looked at as years have been in service. The reason why the monitor, the cardiac monitor is what it is. It's a LifePak 15. It's vital in all cardiac emergencies, not only cardiac arrests, but monitoring and making sure that the medications in which you're given are reacting the way in which they are supposed to. The Lucas device is a battery-operated, compressions. We set the rate, and what that does is allow us to free up hands of one of the other medics to either help extricate or prepare for in the ambulance. That Lucas device stays on. It quite literally does the compressions on when you see CPR giving, and it's much more consistent than any human being could be. We've had great results with that. And then the last is stair chair. The stair chairs are what we use to actually get people down out of, you know, multiple-story buildings or even just an easy way to get them to the stretcher outside. These are pieces of equipment that are used every single day here in Stoughton. And when we looked at the service life or the manufactured years' life, just going through, and you can look at that, is, I think it's in the, what we've given you for information, is we've doubled the life of the stair chairs. And it's not that we were asleep at the wheel, it's just we would replace batteries, we'd fix the equipment, but they're no longer under warranty. If something was to happen, and it did, we, you know, we can't allow that to happen during either cardiac arrests or any type of issue or medical issue we're on. The Lucas devices are at their manufactured life service use. It's eight years. And then the monitors, existing equipment was seven years and eight months at that time, and their manufactured life use is eight years. You may see that originally the cost was $178,988. What we did was we worked with the vendors. My Assistant Chief Maycomber, Deputy Chief Brackett, worked with the vendors and negotiated some trade-in of our older equipment, which they did take. So that's where the price was reduced by approximately $30,000. I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, technical questions? Anybody have any technical questions? Mr. Kirby? Please identify yourself.
Robert Kirby, Precinct 6. I think the fire department needs whatever equipment it deems necessary to save lives. I'm wondering why equipment like this isn't part of your general budget? Don't you have that? Why does a special appropriation become necessary for this kind of thing?
Sure, and I understand the question. Thank you. So the reason this came about was from that OEMS investigation, and we are, to be completely transparent, on one of our cardiac arrests that was being worked, there was a misfire on one of the monitors, which, and thank God, you know, we had the engine had also... Our engines are... The fire engines that you see with the ambulances are also Class 5 ambulance, which means we have all the equipment and medication on. It's a redundancy as well, so we were able to get the other monitor and move forward with a successful outcome for that patient. In looking at, this was in June, in looking at these years of service, and it was brought to our attention that this is really something that the state is starting to look down, you know, really kind of dig down on our annual inspections. So we said, let's get, I guess, a years of service on every single piece of equipment we have. These three popped up as they're not gonna make it to the annual town meeting. So, and they have to be done, or they're taken out of service, or if something does happen where a misfire and it's part of the monitor, that really puts the town of Stoughton in a bad situation, legal and otherwise. So that's why this came up here. If this is something we had known about and recognized prior, we will put it in the annual.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirby. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Pro and con debate? Oh, Bob Coan. I didn't see you, Bob. Go ahead, please rise. And Peter, did you have... Okay, right after Bob Coan.
Bob Coan, Precinct 5. I was a recipient a few years back in the back of that ambulance, and it saved my life. Thank you to the Stoughton Fire Department for doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Coan.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. I, like the previous speaker, unfortunately, a year and a half ago, I had a stroke. I was taken home by the fire department. My house is a typical split entry. If you look around Stoughton, all the houses that are around here, they all have stairs. The firemen, they strapped me into the chair and brought me down the stairs. I didn't even, you know, no bumps. They joked about they only lost one on the flight of stairs. But they were very professional. They hooked me up to the equipment. Every time I see the Stoughton Fire Department and the ambulance go by, I thank them. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. All right, I guess that's it for technical questions. John Rock, did you have a technical question? No? Okay, we're gonna go into the next area of pro and con debate. Anybody from pro and con debate? John Rock? I'm sorry, was that... Oh, did we jump right into? My bad.
Well, I have a question. So it's pro and con, so I'm 1,000% in favor of this. I hope everybody will vote for it. You know, the reason they couldn't do it in the May meeting is because it didn't come to their attention until June. So this is emergency equipment. It seems like an emergency to me, so let's all vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we all set the vote? All right, let's move on to voting. The motion's on the screen. And let me just double-check what the vote is here. Two-thirds is required. Please vote now. One, yes. Two, no. Three, abstain. Motion passes by a clear two-thirds. Article 12. One, 12, yes. Zero, no. One, abstention. Thank you all for voting.
As always, thank you, town meeting reps.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Article 13, rezoning amendment. That appears on page 20 and was not sent to the finance committee for a report or review. I'm gonna ask Steve Kaby to make the motion on this. Mr. Kaby? Yes, Mr. Hanson. Please rise and use the microphone.
I was going to suggest to the audio people, if they crank the gain down a little bit, we wouldn't have that reverb problem. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right, they're doing the best they can. Thank you to the audio smack people. They'll look into that, Mr. Hanson. We lost the screen?
That was on purpose.
That was on purpose, I'm told. They'll bring it back. All right, we're going back to Article 13. I was in the process of asking Mr. Kaby for a motion. Mr. Kaby?
For Article 13. Move that the town vote to amend town of Stoughton zoning bylaw and zoning map as printed in the warrant.
All right, is there a second? Bob Coan seconded that? Who? Peter Ventresco, you wanna take credit for that second? You got it. Okay, Peter Ventresco, change the record on that. Precinct 8. All right, next up is, we're gonna hear the reports. Municipal Regulations, I'll read that one. That's the only committee it went to. Municipal Regulations voted six to zero to recommend a special town meeting. All right, now we're gonna ask for the presenter, and I believe Mr. Bill Roth. Please introduce yourself to the body.
Bill Roth, town planner, town of Stoughton. We have, looking, when I got here, we started with the planning board to take a look at cleaning up some of the zoning map. These were the first three that we wanted to look at. They're historic, commercial uses that were, you know, in fact, no longer, and, you know, cause was not pertinent. You can see in Figure 1, there used to be a commercial, I don't know the history on it, but people have told me, a commercial business out of Glen Echo. That's no longer there. We have purchased it for conservation, for passive and active recreation. This Figure 1 would remove the GB zone. It is not needed, and make the corresponding RC zone. The uses that the CPC and conservation want to do are fully allowed within the RC zone. Figure 2, this was also, I think, it wasn't a gas station, but an auto body store for shop, from what I understand. The town owns Lot 235, and then adjacent to that, to the right on lots 236 and 238, is owned by one gentleman, and it's a two-family residence. Residences, one family, two-family, are not allowed in the GB zone. So a portion of his property and a portion of his lot and the house is not, is existing legal non-conforming. We have no need for a commercial zone here. Anything that we would like to do on Lot 235 can be covered under municipal use, which is allowed in any district. Therefore, to clean this map up, we would take the town's portion, rezone it to the corresponding RC, which is half of the property, and then we would take the RU zone and move that to the gentleman that has the two-family. Therefore, he can be, you know, considered conforming. And then, Sam, number three. This is on the corner of Pleasant and Lincoln. The lots 299 and 300 are the package store. A portion of their parking lot is actually zoned RU. You can see that little triangular piece. There is a slight sliver of 239 Pleasant Street, which is, has a, you know, a very small sliver of GB. That property was just approved for an assisted living, so in order to clean the map up. And then the other thing is on Lot 215, that's a residence, almost a significant portion, you know, so they're legal non-conforming. So what we would like to do is move the zoning line to only the package store, thereby making the adjacent uses conforming. So I'm available for any other questions. This is straightforward, just trying to clean the zoning map up. And oh, by the way, we'll be doing this over the next couple of years. There's a lot of these, but these were the most straightforward ones that we wanted to bring to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Okay, at this point, we have technical questions? Anybody for technical questions? Mr. Dolinsky, I see your hand raised, and followed by Mr. Chuck Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. George Dolinsky, Precinct 2. On the second, I guess, on the Lambert Avenue piece of property over there, that was an old trucking company, and the soil was contaminated. Has that been resolved? Is that soil now uncontaminated, or has it been cleaned up? Because there was a question years ago, because we wanted to use that area for parking for the senior center, and that became up because the soil was contaminated. So I want to know if we've adjusted for that at all.
I have no knowledge that that has actually been done, and Mark Tisdale doesn't either.
That was probably before Mark's time, anyway.
Yeah, and this is strictly the zoning. If we look at doing something with it for municipal use, we obviously, you know, clearly have to look at going through any of the 21E and the regulatory process to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolinsky. Next up is Chuck Collins. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chuck Collins, Precinct 1. Sir, this property has not been cleaned up. There's still concrete pad there. There's cars parked there. There's a plow parked there. And when we originally want this, it was supposed to be for... And when we originally bought this, it was supposed to be for parking for the senior center. And then they talked about doing like a little track, walk track around the whole area. So now we bought it. Now we're gonna rezone it. Are we gonna sell it, or are we gonna keep it as municipal zone? That's my question.
If we...
I mean, it's a presidential area there.
Yeah, I understand.
If you're gonna, if we're gonna redistrict, are we gonna sell it to make it into RC, or are we gonna keep it as municipal?
To the best of my knowledge, I'm looking at just cleaning up the zoning map. Any decision regarding whether we're gonna keep it or sell it is, you know, it's a legislative action that the Select Board would then have to bring in front of town meeting in order to look at selling a piece of property. You know, I'm looking at trying to clean this up to allow us...
I understand what you're trying to do.
So it would come back in front of this body.
Okay. I have a question, but it's probably out of order, so.
No, it's okay. I allowed it. You okay? You have one more?
Well, my question is, since we're cleaning up parcels, there's a lot of parcels of land that people want to buy, and we're supposed to have an auction on, or not an auction, but the Select Board did this on, so people can go to an auction, buy the land? That's, it's not, nobody can use it for building purposes?
Chad, I'm gonna rule that out of order.
Okay, that's my ask.
No, I understand. All right.
But I mean, you should keep that in mind.
Sure, I will. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Quigley, did you have a question? Okay. Anybody else for technical questions on this article? Seeing none, let's go into pro and con debate. Anybody for pro and con debate? Seeing none? All right, Mr. Roth, did you want a summary? I don't think you really need one, but it's up to you.
No, I don't need any summary.
All right, thank you very much. Let's proceed to the vote. The motion appears on the, on the screen. A two-thirds vote is required because it's rezoning. So please vote now. One, two, or three. One yes, two no, three abstain. Two-thirds is required. Article 13's motion passes by a clear two-thirds. One oh five yes, seven no, one abstention. I declare that a vote. Let's move on. We're on Article 14 now, Truck Public Works. That's on page 21, the top of page 21. Because it didn't pass FinCom, I'm gonna ask Scott Carrara. Selecting Carrara for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town vote to appropriate $130,000 to pay for the purchase of a truck for the Public Works Department, and as the funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow said sum under the pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 47, Section 7, or any other enabling authority.
Thank you. Is there a second? Lou Jito, you seconded that? Thank you, Mr. Jito. All right, let's have the reports. FinCom report, please.
Finance Committee voted three to 10 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 14. The motion failed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anokian. Sorry there.
Mr. Moderator, would it be all right, would it be all right if I read the note the Finance Committee had? Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend this article by taking up, to be taken up during the annual town meeting in 2024, when cash may be available to pay for this article.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to Municipal Operations.
The Municipal Operations Committee voted seven to zero, seven yes, zero no, to approve Article 14.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. All right, presenter is Paul Jaffoon. Hi, Paul, introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Good evening, Paul Jaffoon, Public Works. Yeah, very simply, this article, the purpose of this article is to purchase an oversized rack truck equipped with a hydraulic lift gate. The objective for the truck is to replace a 1997 International Rack Truck with 230,000 miles on it. That's in very poor condition. Prior to the passage of our revised bulky solid waste plan, our rack truck left the yard very seldom. With the adoption and growth of our new program, we expect to run the new truck multiple days weekly. The lead time for the receipt of the truck is five to six months. If we defer this article to spring town meeting, we will not take delivery until this time next year. It is absolutely imperative we order this vehicle now if we expect to meet the needs of our citizens, and we cannot rely on our existing truck to support our new program. Just one note. Here's a few photos and a few facts. And you may not be able to see, but the sentence on the bottom reads, "In our initial month of the new solid waste bulk item program, we billed $5,602. We fully expect that number will significantly increase as the program grows. Based on that projection, we will have a loan payoff of less than two years." Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Paul. Okay, at this time, technical questions? Anybody for technical questions? Pat Colburn, please rise and state your name and precinct number.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the DPW head. With the increase in all the rates, it was close to $1 million, we don't have any revenue from all those extra rates to pay for this. I guess I'm concerned that we increased the rates, and I know I never heard anything about having to replace the truck. So I'm just wondering if we have money from all the rate increases available.
Would anybody answer that, please? Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, so the truck is a capital investment for the program. It doesn't, it's not an operational expense.
Thank you. So then, if I could, to Mr. Anokian. Is this along the lines of why you're suggesting to wait to pay cash for it?
It was discussed at the Finance Committee that by waiting to the annual town meeting, free cash would be available, and then we wouldn't need to borrow for this. So that's why the Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to recommend this article be taken up during the annual town meeting.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zemanian, please introduce yourself and ask your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Zemanian, Precinct 1. Through you, to Mr. Jaffoon. You had mentioned the possibility of paying this off. What are the, what is the rate you're borrowing the money at and the period of time under this article? I missed that, if it's in here.
It was not in there. I would defer to people much smarter than I am to answer those questions.
Is there somebody?
Would anybody like to answer that question?
So we reached out to our bond council to learn about the current interest rates. Right now, they're at four and a quarter, and they would get us more information once we have the total of what's approved tonight.
And for how many years?
I believe normally it's 20 years that we take it out, but Paul mentioned two, so we would have to see what...
So you would take a 20-year note on a $130,000? Is that correct?
No.
No.
We would leave that up to bond council to determine how long it would be taken out.
So we don't know what the life of the loan is, correct? Okay. I mean, although I would agree with the Finance Committee, that's for a different point.
You have another question?
I guess, well, my second question is, what is the urgency? I see this truck on the road two, three times a week, on average, and have so for many years. So through you, Mr. Moderator, is there some significant event that has happened with this truck? Because I saw it today, and it, you know, looked pretty good to me. I mean, the paint could use a touch-up, but I'm just wondering why we can't wait until May, when cash is available. I have some deep concerns about borrowing money for something that...
So, so May is when we would be able to know that we could order the truck in July, which would be another five to six months, would be this time next year. You don't see this truck two to three times a week on the road?
I do. Saw it twice today, actually. One on Pleasant Street and one over at...
All right, no cross-debate.
It's just a...
So you may see it more than one or two times. You don't see it more than one or two days a week. For sure.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyway, so there's 230,000 miles on it. We have an intermittent lift gate that sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. We also use this truck in snowstorms when we load up snow blowers, ice melt, shovels, and we park it in the center of town, and we utilize it to transport men and equipment back, back and forth to the yard. You can see the condition of the truck. It's 26 years old with 230,000 miles. The truck doesn't owe us anything, but now with the new program and new revenues being generated, it seems pretty logical.
But again, just to go back to my original question, there hasn't been an event, a catastrophic event with this truck that would require us to do this now, correct?
There has not. We, we're gonna, we try not to wait for catastrophic events to...
No, I understand. It's a special town meeting.
If I may also...
Sure, go right ahead.
If this, if this truck were to go down, and then we only have our other rack truck, we're splitting up other rack trucks now, one for metals, one for other bulky furniture stuff. If this were to go down, and we could only have one, we may not get the schedule done in the day that we're doing. And then if we had to rent one, you're talking 3,500, 4,000 a month to rent a truck that only goes out right now four or five times a month.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you both. Thank you. Sandra, are you up?
Sandra, who's a precinct one. So just so that I'm clear, this is the truck that picks up all of the large, heavy pieces, so couches, bureaus, dishwashers, all of those kinds of things. And it's, we have two of these. And this is what is doing the heavy lifting for the new trash program, where we're charging for every single piece. Correct?
That's correct. It's also been doing the heavy lifting for all of that stuff that we haven't been charging for over the past thirty-ish.
So that was being taken for free in our regular trash, but now this is picking up those items. So there's, I'm guessing that there's a lot more work that these are performing.
That's correct.
So we went into this new program, picking up everything that the trash trucks used to take, and we didn't plan for replacement of a 26-year-old truck with 250,000 miles on it.
Is that a question?
It is a question. So was there no planning on that?
The plan was to come to special town meeting for the truck.
Okay. So we did the...
You asked two questions.
I'm just trying to get the, so we did the other, we did the planning for the program, though, at fall, but we didn't include this.
I think the question was asked and answered.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, Mr. Coan, please rise, state your name and precinct number.
Bob Coan, Precinct 5. What are we doing with a 24-year-old truck on the streets of Stoughton?
Would anybody like to answer that?
In poor condition.
The best I can say is we do the best with what we have.
I understand that. This tailgate you said isn't safe. Someone gets behind it, someone gets hurt. The word is workman compensation.
Is there a question there?
Yes. Is that, you said the tailgate is unsafe. Am I correct?
I said it works intermittently.
It's unsafe. To me, it's unsafe. And maybe we ought to call OSHA in, and we'll condemn the truck, and we'll buy a new one. Folks, we, if you went into the yard and looked at the sand, there's...
Mr. Coan, Mr. Coan.
The bottom line is...
Please, please, you had your questions. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let me respond to Mr. Coan. I appreciate all the support here. But we're gonna move on. Anybody else for technical questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move into pro and con debate. Mr. Coan? Please rise, state your name.
It's the same guy he threw out on back again. Folks, there's no ands, ifs about. We need a truck. We're prolonging it. Six months later, we procrastinate. We need this truck. Vote for it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Coan.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Down here, sir.
Where are we? Mr. Carrara?
You gotta look this way once in a while, boy.
I do, I do. I just, we're busy down this end. But go ahead, sir.
There's no ice cream trucks down here. Just so that you people know, when we did the auction, this truck was slated to go in the auction, but the day that it was supposed to slate to come in, wasn't running. They had trouble starting it. So I says, let's not put it in. This truck is in very dire need of the junkyard. And I can't believe that it goes out in the shape it is, and most of it is because it works during the winter through all the salt. Aluminum bodies, steel trucks, they're not compatible at times, and it holds it. It eats itself away. But when you see it in the winter with bags and bags and bags of salt, and they're putting it down in the square to make it safe, it spills. It gets on all the gears. It gets on all the electronics, which are open to the weather. This is why the gate doesn't work a lot of times, because it works on a magnet, magnetic switches. It is, it is really sad that this, this truck has, has lived a life like this, but I'm gonna tell you something. If we buy it now and we bond it, we're not against using free cash, if it's available, to pay the whole note off. So don't be scared that we're gonna hang on to it for 20 years. If we can pay free cash like FinCom wants to do, if we have some, then you put it on the truck. This truck is gonna make you money. It's not just out there breaking its camel's back and wearing itself out. And once Paul, the town manager, and I sit down, and we set up a proper fleet program, and we don't go what previous guys did, was run onto the ground and then ask you to give us a brand-new one, we're gonna go on a plan where the truck isn't gonna get to this stage. It's gonna be offered out, traded in, like smart people do. But we had a few DPW guys who weren't paying attention, and this board got one sheet before the guy went out the door telling us how to rotate the trucks, and no heading, no nothing, just five trucks, they should be replaced. That's not how you do it. You have all the mileage down. The way I talked to Paul about the rubbish trucks, we were slated to buy a third rubbish truck, which was ridiculous. I talked to him, and he says, we can get by now. We have two, one coming in on one rotation, and then the next one coming in. This is how the trucks have to be done. They gotta be rotated. They can't be driven into the ground.
Ten seconds, Scott.
So I ask you just to give them a little leeway, because it'll be too late when, when we get it, because of the bid process.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Coleman, then followed by Peter Murphy? Is there anybody else?
We're on questions or comments now?
We're on pro and con debate.
Oh, good, all right. If I understand this correctly, we wouldn't be getting the truck until this time next year. I assume that that's correct. And if that's the case... No?
Wait a minute. Do you have, okay. So first of all, this is pro and con debate. We're not gonna ask questions right now.
All right, I'm making assumptions.
Okay, make the assumptions.
So if it's ordered and it comes in after July 1st, then there's no money being spent, no bond being taken out, and at that point in time, you can pay the cash for it.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Murphy? Okay, question's been... Motion's made. Who seconded that? Bob Coan, is that the I? Okay, no, thank you. All right, all those in favor moving the question. Say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Paul, did you want to take a few minutes to wrap it up, or are you good?
I think I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, it requires a two-thirds vote. We are ready to vote. Please vote one, two, or three. Vote now. We did not get two-thirds in that article. Motion fails. Sixty-seven yes, fifty no, zero abstentions. All right, thank you all for that debate. Let's move on. Article 15 on page, bottom of page 21, fire alarm system upgrades at Cedar Hill. Mr. Anokian, can I have the motion, please?
That the town vote to appropriate $30,000 from the Cedar Hill Golf Course Enterprise Fund retained earnings to fund fire alarm system upgrades at the Cedar Hill Golf Course.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric Anderson. Thank you, Eric. Can I have the FinCom report, please?
Finance committee voted thirteen to zero to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 15.
Thank you. Municipal operations.
The municipal operations committee voted six, zero, one, one oh six yes, zero no, one abstention to approve Article 15. I abstain because I'm a member of the Cedar Hill Golf Course Operations Committee.
Thank you, Cynthia. At this time, we have Chief Carroll doing the presentation. Chief?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we come to you tonight requesting an update of the fire alarm system within Cedar Hill. In a recent inspection, actually inspection with a building inspector to the attic that was insulated, we recognized there are some critical gaps in the fire alarm system there. It has been an old system, although we realized there was no protection in the attic. We also, as many know, that the Cedar Hill has done very, very well. And with that came, I think, a draw, a crowd, which they've done a wonderful job with. As the fire chief, it concerns me that it's not just the golf course that they actually have restaurant, they have a great nighttime entertainment there, which to me, I didn't feel like we had adequate fire protection for a fire alarm system in there. And looking at the system, the attic was not actually monitored, which is a concern of mine. If anybody wants to reflect back on the station nightclub fire that was burning for a while and caught and, and just took off. And I hate to come with that type of mindset, but that's kinda how I look at a lot of things. That's why the egress, we have to widen the egress as well. The building inspector is in full sport and Mr. Erickson has been very, very proactive in this. We're working with the, obviously, the town, but as well as the vendors in there. Paul and I, Mr. Jafune, who takes care of the facilities, and I met with the fire alarm company and got a quote. I think that we're all on the same page. It's, it's such an advanced system and I think it's a really good system where, apologies, the music actually lowers the minute the alarms are sounded to let everybody can hear it. This is all built into the system. So I think moving forward, I think it's an absolute need, it's necessary, and I'll entertain any questions unless Mr. Jafune has some more to add.
Paul, do you have anything to add? Go ahead.
I do not, very well said by Chief Carroll, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, technical questions? Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. Is there any fire suppression up in the attic or within that building?
The only fire suppression I would believe would be the hood vents, but no, as long as the occupancy remains classified as such and is less than 100 occupants, it's not required for a sprinkler system.
But should we think about it?
As, you know, it would be, I wouldn't, you wouldn't want me as fire chief if I said, "No, let's not put in a fire, a sprinkler system." I mean, but we were just trying to approach this in, in a systematic way of definitely handling what we see in the occupancy we have right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mark Zemanian, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mark Zemanian, precinct one, through you, Mr. Moderator. Just two quick questions for you, and I'm not sure who can answer the first one. What does Cedar Hill have in its returned earnings this year? Is there sufficient funding to cover this in completion or...
Can anybody answer that? Go ahead, Mary Jane.
Hi, we currently have the FY22 certified retained earnings and there is enough money for, to cover that. We haven't finished the FY23 certified yet.
Okay, there's enough, you just don't know what's in the total retained earnings, correct?
No, I have what it is after this, if you want that.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yep, so we had returned earnings as of July 1 of '22. We used just above $47,000 at the annual town meeting in May. This article would be removing $30,000 and it would give a balance of $227,036. But then we do get a new certified retained earnings at the end of this year.
Understood, that was the number I was looking for, thank you, Mary Jane. And again, through you, Mr. Moderator, how old is the existing system, chief? Is it that old?
Cynthia Walsh could probably answer this better than me, to be honest with you.
It's well beyond its life expectancy?
Yeah, but it's much older than that. This is an old, non-trustable, and what that really means is we basically have no idea where the alarm is actually acted, activated from. There's two, only two zones in there.
Yep.
We have to go and find it, so it's, it's a fairly old system.
Enough said, thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Marguerite Mitchell, please identify yourself.
Marguerite Mitchell, precinct three. Chief, you mentioned egress doors, but I didn't see that in the attached information of the quote, so I'm wondering if this $30,000 is going to cover all of the fire safety concerns that you believe exist for the building as of right now?
So, Mr. Jafune just notified me, it's, they're working on the pricing on that? I know they had a couple vendors in there and how do you want to...
And if I may, Mr. Moderator, through you.
Sure.
And we can get that work done through the budget.
So that was my second question, because I was a little surprised to see this come in as a special town meeting approval, and I wouldn't necessarily want to hold up any additional fire safety needs for this building, because we have to wait for town meeting approval. Is there room in the budget to make some of these additional, you know, cost outlays? And if so, if there isn't, is that something we can be looking at when we establish our budget for next year?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Which...
Let Mr. Jafune answer that, I'm sure he knows.
So in, in terms of additional work that needs to be done, the widening of the egress is, is the major component that will be left. And, and again, that's something that we can do through the budget. I'm not sure exactly what other improvements or work that...
Well, I mean, for instance, if you had decided that you need the fire sprinkler system, that would be another improvement that may be determined as you go forward. So I'm just trying to make sure that this building is safe. I, I support this article, I think that this building needs to be upgraded, we are making some really effective use of it, but I want to make sure that we're actually funding it correctly right now, we don't have to wait for another meeting to get more funding.
I, I absolutely agree with you and I appreciate what you're saying. I think that the widening of the exit doors, really only one has to be done, the front where there's a vestibule, needs to be widened. I believe as Mr. Jafune said, that can be picked up either in the budget or like Mrs. Walsh said, it's, it's under a enterprise account. The fire alarm system, I can tell you that the, the quote we got here is top-notch and it really works with this system. If the, if they decide to ask for a different type of occupancy, i.e. a nightclub, dance hall type thing with 100 plus, 100 or more occupants, it would require, under Mount General Law, a sprinkler system. If they want to go for that occupancy type. But right now, they have no, they've never come to me with, you know, requesting that permit, or actually the building inspector would actually offer that. And so I can tell you right now, here today, this is a great system. Widening of the doors, I believe they were working on and getting pricing on, and I think it's going to be done in conjunction with the, yeah. My, my, my two kids go there too, so I was a little nervous, yeah. But no, we want this safe and it will be top-notch.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? Mr. Cohen, please rise, state your name and precinct number.
One question, is there a fire hydrant anywhere up in that golf course parking lot or up near that building? How far is the local fire hydrant?
Specific in feet, I'm not sure, but there is a hydrant in that, in that lot.
In that lot.
And if we have to, yeah, I don't know how much water's in that little pond, but we'll use that.
Mr. Cohen, did you have another question?
No.
We good? Thank you, chief. Anybody else for technical questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on pro and con debate so we keep this evening going. Anybody pro and con debate? Don't see anybody? Okay, this is a borrowing article, I believe, two-thirds, right?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. This is not a borrowing article.
Oh, not a borrow, I'm sorry, my bad. Just a majority vote is required, simple majority. Okay, please vote now, one, two, or three. One yes, two no, three abstain. Article 15, motion passes. One oh three yes, four no, two abstentions, and declared out of vote. Thank you for those questions and debate. We're gonna move on, Article 16, next page, page 22, roadway resurfacing. Can I have a motion by Vaughn Anokian, please?
That the town vote to appropriate $2,189,843 to fund roadway resurfacing, and that to meet this appropriation, the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow said sum under and pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority.
Second.
Second. Eric Anderson, seconded by Eric Anderson. I did hear somebody over here, but we'll take Eric right now. Did you say something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted nine to four to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 16.
Thank you. I'll read into governmental relations report. They voted six to zero to refer this article as written to town meeting. Municipal operations committee?
Zero to approve Article 16.
Thank you, Cynthia. All right, now we look for the presenter, Mr. Paul Jafune. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. I believe town manager called, there wants to say a few words before I begin.
Sure.
Briefly, Mr. Moderator, just to clarify to the members, town meeting members, I recognize we typically do these articles at the annual. The reason we're asking, we've explained this to the select board and to the finance committee member, finance committee members, is that with supply chain problem, problems that have existed in the past four years, we've had difficulty when we do this in the spring, getting materials and supplies to, in time to finish out the work during the construction season, for water, even for asphalt. So we're asking for policy change where we take these two infrastructure bills, this article and the next article, up at the fall town meeting, which gives us plenty of time to bond the borrowing and then do the ordering in time to have the whole summertime construction season to do the work. So by taking these two articles up this evening, they will not be on the annual town meeting in the spring. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just got a few quick sentences here. This article represents the continuation of the next phase of our successful townwide paving plan. In the spring, town meeting graciously appropriated $2.6 million for the repaving of 33 streets. Over the last 15 months, we have paved 49 streets in town. With this article, we hope to pave an additional 22 streets and continue this program that the town has never seen and/or funded until recently. As you've already read in your special town meeting book, the report on all our street index will show you the state of our roadway infrastructure. Also, a few streets on this year's list are being coordinated with the installation of new water mains. We believe we are making great progress with our infrastructure and hope town meeting will continue to encourage and support our efforts.
Thank you, Paul. All right, technical questions? Lisa Lyons, please state your name and precinct number.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. I totally get the town manager's point of why he's asking for this, and I certainly want our streets paved. My question is, is why do we need to borrow this? Why can't this be part of our budget, part of the levy?
Can anybody answer that, please?
I, I think adding $2 million to the operating budget for one department may, may be a little infeasible at this time. The reason that we've asked for so much, I'll say, recently, is that we have so much catching up to do with our streets. And, and this is, this seemed to be the best avenue of how to, how to get this work done for the near future.
So, so my second question, that is my concern in general, is the overall lack of planning that causes us to borrow instead of being cognizant of the taxpayer dollars and actually trying to tighten our belts here and plan for these things better, so we're not having to borrow as much and we're, we're just planning this out better. I, I, I don't know, is that done at the select board level or is, is there somebody on the select board that can address?
I'll let Mr. Jito answer that. Go ahead, Mr. Jito.
You're absolutely right. There has been a lot of things put off for years. We're trying to change the program and get our infrastructure in order. We need to do that, and we can't do it by paying it out of each year's operating budget. We have to spread that money over time. And, you know, it would be nice to have done this year upon year, so we didn't, we weren't dealing with such large numbers in the years that we're, that we're dealing with. But we have a lot of streets that need attention right away. And so that's the list that Paul is talking about. And it's for, for sewer, not for, for, for the roadways and for water and sewer as well. So, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Your microphone's all working, can we get that working? Try one more time. No. Can we get that, can we get her microphone working, please? Want to move right up to the next one?
So while I respect your attempt to try to answer the question, my question's geared more to the budget and planning, like Mr. Scott Carrara, who suggested we actually reduce the levy and put money into the stabilization fund. Bad prior planning doesn't mean we just gorge at the trough and just keep spending it all now. That's my point, and that's my concern. And I'd like to commend Mr. Carrara for being the first select man to, to ever actually consider the taxpayers in this town. consider the taxpayers in this town, both our seniors and our very hard-working constituents. That's my point. Thank you for the moment.
Thank you.
Next up, Pat Colburn, please identify yourself.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4, to Mr. Jafoun. I saw the chart on page 208, and there was a column called Functional Class, and I was just hoping you could explain what L-O-C-S and D-E mean, so I know maybe when my street might get done. It's the very last column on the chart. I didn't see it. Oh, thank you. The very last column says Functional Class, and it's L-O-C-S-D-E. And I thought that might have something to do with the order you do the streets in.
I don't know that answer right now, but I will get that answer to you. I'll talk to this consultant who did this report.
Okay. Thank you, I just didn't know if it was important to understanding it, I appreciate it.
I, I think the most important column is the one that says overall repair.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you both. Mr. Fox, please identify yourself.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. FinCom had a, kind of a split decision on this, and I wanted to find out from FinCom, maybe what the reason was.
The reason for the nine to four vote, is that what the question is?
Yes.
There wasn't really a lot of discussion as to why people would vote no on this during the, during the meeting. There was discussion about how some people were happy that there were steps being taken to address the streets going forward, and Mr. Jafoun during that hearing did say that it had to do with why it was happening now, is because things hadn't been done in years. But there was no real discussion as to why people were specifically going to vote no. I can only speculate on that, I wouldn't want to do that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you both. Next up, Mr. Quigley, please identify yourself.
Ed Quigley, Precinct 2. I have a question, it might be beyond the scope, but you could tell me to stop talking.
Okay, let's make it, go ahead.
When we do these resurfacing projects, do we take in consideration any projects that improve the surfaces that we're resurfacing, or do we just resurface, cover over existing problems? I live on Prospect Street, everybody knows some of the issues with traffic on Prospect Street. So I'm just curious whether we simply, I mean, I'm glad it's gonna be repaired because of what we've got, the sewer work has just been done, but predating the sewer work, there have been traffic issues on the street, and I'm just wondering whether that's taken into consideration for, for that street in particular, but any of the streets when we're doing resurfacing? And it may be beyond the scope, I don't know.
I'll let it, I'll let them answer that if they can. I'll allow that. I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I, what is exactly your question?
Well, for example, Prospect Street, which is less than three quarters of a mile, could also be known as Prospect Raceway, and everyone here knows how fast traffic is on that street. This would be a great opportunity to take some kind of traffic calming measures, or even restricting the tractor trailer rigs that take forever once they get down to Pleasant Street and realize, oh, this is not wide enough to turn, even though my GPS told me to go this way. So I'm just wondering if those things are taken into consideration.
Yes, sir, those things are taken into consideration. The plan for Prospect Street is, so we just did all that water main, the fire stations going in there, when that's all done, next, next year for using the Chapter 90 funds, we hope to do Prospect Street, and then even there's another traffic, a, I'm sorry, light paving sidewalk handicap ramp project on the lower end of Walnut Street too, so we hope to encompass all that with Chapter 90 next year.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
For example, so, so the answer to your question is yes.
All right, thank you both. Mr. Hanson, identify yourself.
Thank you. You probably partially answered the question. Is there going to be some, we'll say, survey, not in that transit sense, but to see like, for instance, if there's sewer connections that need, the stubs that need to be broke, brought out and all this before the thing is paved? I know in the past, many years ago, eons perhaps, that there was a superintendent of the Public Works Department, and he would go around and talk to the gas company and all this other stuff, saying, straighten out whatever you gotta straighten out, 'cause we're gonna pave it. And, actually, he was very successful in doing that. But about the sewer connections and all that, the water mains and stuff, what planning has been done on that? I'm sure there's some, but that's my question, and the floor is yours.
Go ahead, Paul.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, every time we do a new project, especially underground utility work, all of the utilities are brought to the property lines, so that way everything within hour right away is completed. And for, for the last few years, any, any and all streets that we're gonna pave or resurface or however we wanna say it, we've coordinated directly with water and sewer, and we'd like to think there's no surprises. We also are in constant contact with the gas company, we send them a list every time we're gonna update it or hope to do new projects. So, so there is a lot of coordination that's done.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Mr. Murphy, identify yourself, please.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. So this money here is gonna be earmarked for 2024. So, my question is, what about 2025? If you're not gonna come to town meeting next May, looking for money for 2025, and we're not guaranteed to have a special town meeting, even though we've had it for the past six or seven years. So would you be coming then at the special town meeting, looking for 2025?
Mr. Moderator, I believe Mr. Coulter would like to respond to that.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Absolutely, we will, we hope to do it every fall town meeting, special fall town meeting. If there is no special fall town meeting, then we would have to wait till the spring. All we're saying is that when we do it in the spring, because of the time it takes to bond it, to bid it, and to buy supplies, we run out of, we run out of runway, we run out of the construction season. So, our goal is to have funding for each construction season for as long as Town Meeting members want to fund infrastructure improvements. The optimum is to do it in the fall. If there is no fall town meeting, then we'll do it in the spring. It won't be optimal, but that's when we'd have to do it.
If you were to get this money now, and you come again back in the springtime, now you're gonna be six months ahead of time for the following year, or eight, eight months ahead of time. So, I would recommend coming before spring meeting and asking for the money then.
We're gonna have you be the presenter.
I'd love to do it, as long as I get my sidewalks on Turnpike Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Town Manager. Johnna, go ahead and please identify yourself.
Johnna Rosenblatt, Precinct 7. My question is, how accurate are the expenditure amounts that you have on that chart, because it's dated 2021?
Can anybody answer her?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Moderator. We added a 25% contingency, and we believe with that additional 25%, we're pretty comfortable that the pricing will fall pretty much in line with that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you both. Next up, Mr. Kirby, please identify yourself.
Robert Kirby, Precinct 6. Most of my questions were answered, they have to do with the overall collaboration between utilities such as water, sewer, gas, and so forth. Because time and time, I've seen a beautifully paved street be upturned by the gas company or somebody coming in and marring the whole project. When you talk about resurfacing, that can also be incarnated in a variety of ways. For example, on the street on which I live, they did a resurfacing project.
Mr. Kirby, is there a question?
Yes, I was gonna ask, to what standard is this resurfacing going to be? Because there's so many different standards, I've seen some very shoddy jobs, I've seen some kind of coarse pavement, like in front of my house, which if a child were to like fall, they'd be torn to shreds on the, the type of pavement that's there. So, what kind of standard are you keeping, and, and those 33 streets that are being addressed, are they virtually certifiably done with, in terms of the utilities and things that need to be addressed ahead of time?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Virtually done with the utilities, to answer that question, yes, virtually done. And the standard that, the best practice that we've been using and will continue to is, we mill and pave, and we mill and repave these streets. Does that answer your question?
So you, you will be taking it down and resurfacing, so they're, they're going to do a complete, a milling job, basically, taking everything out?
So we mill everything down, we adjust all the castings to what the new grade will be, we'll pave back up to where the roadway was originally, and most of the times, we're adding Cape Cod berm on, on most of these streets that we do. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you both. All right, that's technical questions. Okay. Paul, come to the microphone, please state your name and precinct number. We just gotta try to keep moving along.
Paul Bellevault, Precinct 3. You have this wonderful spreadsheet here with all this information, overall repair, preventative maintenance, major rehabilitation. Could you, for our next meeting at some point, take this spreadsheet, sort it out for the major repairs, give us an idea over extended amount of time, and, you know, as to how many streets you repave each year? Are we looking at a, a project that's gonna go 10 years into the future, and are we gonna be spending $2 million a year? I, I think with what you've got here, you could probably put some projections out there, so people won't be, you know, saying, oh, well, this is crazy, that, you know, blah, blah, blah. Give us a, give us a long-range forecast, get our streets in order, and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you do that? Thank you.
Would you like to answer that, anybody? Paul, I got it. Paul?
Yeah, we can do that. If, if you look on the last page of the report, so it, it, this, this was updated in 2021, but the actual report was done in 2019. When I say updated, just with some streets that were paved that year. And it shows $27 million worth of work that has to be done on 397 streets in town. But, no, no, I'm sorry, that's 27,000. No, but it was about $26 million, something like that. But yes, we can put something like that together, yes.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, we're gonna move right into pro and con debate. Okay, we gotta keep moving, so, yeah, go ahead. Come to the microphone, please introduce yourself.
David Lurie, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to comment that I'm very much in favor of this article for many reasons. What this town's gone through, and it did create a major problem with the roads, I agree with all the arguments that said we have a lot of work to catch up. The other argument on why do it at the special and why do, why do it all the time, I like the productivity that we'll get out of it, because the, the hefty sums that are gonna be asked every fall will get a whole lot of projects done as quickly as possible, so we get ahead of the problem. I just wanna say that I, I have a lot of confidence in the leadership that was shown not only on the select board, but also with the town management. It's been better than I could ever imagine, based on the way I've seen it in the not-so-recent past. I wanna speak to the borrowing aspect, there's been consternation over borrowing. I think what you, you have to understand, and it's kind of a hard concept, I think, to kind of get across, is that borrowing inside the budget is not always bad. If you let the borrowing, the debt service in a budget, go down to zero, and we had recent administrations who believed that's where it should've gone, that's money that you can't claw back into debt service over time, because it gets sunk into salaries and department costs. It's very, very hard to create debt in the budget. So guess what happens? Articles just like this one end up going to the townwide vote. You end up getting overrides. It's very important to find a balance with the right percentage or a floor of debt inside your budget, so that the money that comes in every year goes out the door towards a bond, and it keeps it from getting sunk into a giant black hole in the, in the operating budget. So I, I suggest that people kind of think positively about debt that comes in inside the budget like this. So on all those different reasons, I think everybody should vote yes on this article.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else for pro and con? Bob Cohen? As long as we're not hearing the same thing over and over, Bob. I mean, go ahead.
My street was done this year, three and a half years after fighting to get it done. And half of the problem was, we were banking on state money. As the Senator said, we get $733,000, and we kept using it. The board up there recognized the problem. The Public Works guys recognized the problem, and we had to put more money in it to start catching up on our streets. It didn't help to have someone come down and put this tar, some kind of tar they put on three years ago, and the neighbors had to go get their cars fixed, because the tar stuck to the tires. But the job they did was A1, superb, and it also adds to the value of your house too. And I thank you for finally taking care of my street. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call that as moderator's discretion. We're gonna be done with pro and con debate.
Right.
As time is getting close to adjourning here. All right, you want a summary, Paul? Are we good?
I think we're good, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Please vote now. One, two, or three? Just one. Okay, Article 16, motion passes, by a class two-thirds. Ninety-four yes, nine no, one abstention. All right, let's quickly move on to Article 17. That's on the bottom of page 22, the water main upgrades and improvements. Mr. Anokian, I'm gonna ask you to read your amended motion, if we can have the amended motion on the screen.
Mr. Moderator, the amended motion that the Finance Committee voted to put forward is that the town vote to appropriate $3,400,000 to undertake maintenance, extraordinary maintenance, improvements, repairs, upgrades, modifications, and the like to the town-owned water mains, including but not limited to replacement of existing water mains, new valves, fire hydrants, customer water services, as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. You authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow $3,400,000 under and pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority and further. Although these bonds and notes will be considered general obligations of the town, the debt service on these obligations is intended to be repaid by the Water Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Seconded by Eric Anderson. All right, I asked Mr. Anokian, just for the background, to read the amended motion. If there's no objection, we're gonna proceed with the amended motion, because the red is just the, the additional information. Anybody have objections? We good on this side? You can take a moment if you wanna take a look. Okay. Okay. Mr. Town Council, if you wanna weigh in?
Any member of this body can make a motion pursuant to the article, so the motion made, it's maybe a misnomer to refer to it as an amended motion. It is the prime motion under this article. And so now, if anyone wants to change it, there could be a motion to amend, but right now, the main motion under Article 17 is the one just read and up on the screen. So you can proceed to debate it and handle it in the usual course.
Okay. He's just saying, it's not the one in the book, but we can make the amended motion. Right.
No, Mr. Moderator, the one in the book is printed as a courtesy. There's no obligation that the one in the book be read. The article is what's voted by the selectmen and inserted into the warrant. The motions are there in advisory capacity, and so whoever reads the motion, the main motion, is what's put on the floor to town meeting. And so that's what was made now.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I could follow up on this?
I was trying to save a little time instead of going through.
I understand that.
Main motion, we're gonna accept the amended motion.
And it's got nothing to do with the amendment.
Now we're gonna spend more time. Go ahead.
Typically, as precedent, we vote on an amendment. We vote whether or not to accept the amendment, and if the amendment fails, we can revert back to the original motion. I just wanna know if we're changing the rules of town meeting?
No, no.
Where that's the precedent we set. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I don't wanna change the precedent. Can I go back to the, can we withdraw this motion and go back to the book motion? Well, just so we have a process. Was there a second? By Eric Anderson, yes. Okay. It's on the floor. Okay, so.
So were we voting amended or the original motion?
The motion. This is the motion, though.
I'm wanting to mic off it.
Yes, it is. This is the motion that's on the floor. Okay.
The book does not have that information.
It's on the virtual table. It's been handed out prior. It's a motion. Okay, the point is, we'll go back to the original way. I didn't wanna, I was trying to save time, not to add confusion, but obviously, there's confusion. Yes, please rise. Come to the microphone and state your point of order.
Sandra Suza, precinct one. I don't, I don't wanna make an assumption on what Mr. Zemanian, what I think Mr. Zemanian is saying, but normally, as I can recall, when we have an amended motion that's on the table like this, we generally do a voice vote to accept this amended motion and then move forward. So is that, that might be what Mr. Zemanian is referring to, but that's what I recall generally happening.
All right.
I'm not an attorney or anything, but...
All right, hang on, let's not have cross debate. Give me a moment here to talk to my town council.
So that's just what I think he might be saying, because I was missing that. And then if this doesn't pass, we would refer, we would refer back to what we started with. That's all.
Is there a way I can unravel this, Town Council?
No, at this point, Mr. Moderator, no.
Okay.
But both procedures are correct procedures. There isn't one that's legal and one not legal. It's a matter of local preference and how your town meeting operates. So if you would prefer, in moderator's discretion, to have a motion that's made, and then immediately follow it with a motion to amend, you could do it in two steps. You could also have, as we have here, a main motion that's on the floor, and if that motion is unacceptable to this meeting, someone can make a motion to amend that and put it on the floor in a different form. So those are both acceptable vehicles for advancing a motion under an article. And I leave it to your moderator and to this meeting to decide which is the most appropriate for this community.
Let me ask you another question, Mr. Town Council. Can I ask for, I know, I know, it's his taking time. I was hoping we could jump right to this, but can I ask for the maker of the motion to withdraw this motion, proceed to the original motion in the book, then go back to the amended motion, just to have a process? Excuse me. Right, I know that, that's why I'm trying to get here.
Does anybody want the motion?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Page 237 of your rules.
I got you.
Article three, a motion once made and sanctified shall not be withdrawn without the consent of the meeting.
Okay. Yes, John? Please identify yourself. I can't hear you with the, there we go.
Precinct one. Just in the interest of time, can I make a motion that we accept this, this new wording, additional wording, and just get it over with?
Seconded.
Okay, who, who seconded by Elliot? Okay, by voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. All right, next time we do this, we'll go through step at a time. Just slows it down. But, okay, so on the amended motion that is now on the screen, okay. On the amended motion that was on the screen, okay? Can we get that back on the screen at all? Okay, can I get a Finance Committee report? There was a second by Eric Anderson, so Finance Committee report, please.
Yes, the Finance Committee voted eight to zero to put forth this alternate motion. Is that what you're asking for, Mr. Moderator?
I'm just looking at where your report is.
The original, the original report was, the Finance Committee voted 11 to 2 to 1 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Article 17.
Right.
And the Finance Committee met recently to discuss possibly putting a amended motion on the table to clarify some discussion that occurred at the Finance Committee meeting. The Finance Committee had some questions regarding the repayment of the debt. And the Finance Committee wanted to ensure that it would be repaid by the Water Enterprise Fund, that that would be the intent. So the Finance Committee then met to discuss putting forward this amended motion.
And what was the, did you ever report on the amended motion?
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
Yes. Finance Committee voted eight to zero to put forward the amended motion.
Okay, I just didn't get the FinCon report on that one. If I did, it's my mistake, but I didn't see.
Yeah, the original Finance Committee vote was 11 to 2 to accept or recommend, but for the amended motion, it was eight to zero.
Okay, we didn't get that, but, okay, so eight to zero current FinCon report on this amended motion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Intergovernmental Relations, they voted on the original motion, they voted six to zero to refer as approved to town meeting. And Municipal Operations?
Voted seven to zero to approve Article 17.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point in time, the presenter is Mr. Phil McNulty. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil McNulty, Stoughton Water and Sewer Department. The, similar to the last article, we're talking infrastructure. The water main improvements presented here are prioritized based on the following. Number one, our updated 2022 Water Master Plan recommendations that consider undersized mains, asbestos cement mains, and old, unlined cast iron mains. Number two, the rule of thumb in the water industry is to replace 1% to 2% of the water mains for a system of our age and size, and we wanna keep up with that, so we don't fall behind. And number three, aligning and coordinating the water main improvements with the roadway resurfacing program, as Paul mentioned on the last article. The town manager mentioned that the, this project is presented now to align with the winter bidding and spring construction schedule in order to get better pricing in the bids. The recommendations and costs are included here in the warrant, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Phil. All right, technical questions. Lisa Lyons, I see you're up first. Go ahead.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So, quick question. Think it's a great idea, we do need to replace them. The question is, given, I just wanna know how this will impact the water rates, given that it's, all our water rates, water and sewer rates just increased, so how does that affect the tax payers?
Well, certainly, based on the revised motion, it's gonna head towards the Water Enterprise Fund specifically, rather than otherwise.
Oh, no, I do understand that. Maybe Tom Colta can help identify, is that gonna increase the rates yet again?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, go ahead.
Every November, Lisa, we will look at the revenue flow based upon the new rates, and we'll look at the expenses. Clearly, this will be increased interest, debt and interest expense after this investment. We may find in November that the billings are sufficient to cover this new expense. The staff won't increase, it'll be the interest expense on this. But we have promised that we will revisit the rate structure every year, based upon the previous 12 months' revenue stream, based upon the new rates.
Second question, have, what are we anticipating? Like, what are you anticipating, or you just have no idea right now?
Well, we don't have, we do have an idea. We based the new rate structure based upon known information, what the consumption was, what the revenue flow was from the previous year, what our expenses were. So it's our hope and expectation that we have a, a water and sewer department that makes $1.
No, I understand that. Was this $3,400,000 considered in that decision?
No, because that's for the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Molly, you're up next. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Molly Cochran, precinct two. This is obviously a very significant and very expensive and very in-depth project. My question is, I'm familiar with the draft multi-town hazard mitigation plan that had a draft that was submitted in October of this year for comment, which goes through, quite frankly, addressing anticipated climate change, weather, and hazard events, including obviously flooding, which is something we're all aware of. So I guess my question is, does this plan, does this design and the work that's gonna be carried out for this three-plus-million dollars, is it addressing those issues, those recommendations, and the measures that should be taken to anticipate extreme weather advance, extreme flooding events?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So it's addressing the priority, as I mentioned, is from the, it's taken from the recommendations of the updated Water Master Plan. What does that mean? It means that we have some AC pipe out there that's, that's, you know, it's a high priority to remove that. As far as climate, I mean, the water, the water mains are buried five feet, so they're really not subject to temperature change. It stays 50 degrees there all the time. So what we're basically looking for is, in terms of infrastructure, that's gonna really cost the town, like a road blowing up, because asbestos water mains, they break violently, and they ruin, you know, they cause property damage and roadway damage. So we're gonna target those until those are all removed. And then we have about 25 to 30 miles of unlined cast iron main that is 100 years old. So that's basically what we're addressing.
So I guess I'm just getting the sense that, obviously, I don't have an understanding of the, but there doesn't seem to be any interaction between the issues that are being looked at in the hazard mitigation plan with respect to potential flooding issues and storm, you know, drainage and things of that nature? That doesn't seem to interact with this project?
Thanks for the question, Molly. I think we're mixing apples with oranges. The climate change stuff and the hazard mitigation plan, so do more with the culverts and stormwater runoff and things of that nature. So these pipes are different. These carry the water throughout town, not the stormwater from rain events and things of that nature. So we're very focused on the hazard mitigation plan as it relates to culverts and stormwater runoff.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay. Next up, Greg, can you identify yourself?
Greg Pokraka, precinct two. Is this future projects or current projects? I see Prospect Street listed on there, but that's pretty much done at this point. Why are we asking for money for Prospect Street?
So, yeah, this is, as Town Manager mentioned, this is gonna be ongoing and married up with the paving, paving plan. So the last round of construction, Prospect Street, as well as Knowles, Camille, and Henry, and a little piece of copperwood, was all coordinated between myself and Paul to be, you know, do the, do the subgrade work and then pave afterwards. Let the trenches settle properly and then pave them. So moving forward, that'll be, continue to be done.
So that didn't answer my question. So Prospect Street Water Main Project is basically almost completed now, but we're asking for money for Prospect Street Water Main?
No, we're not.
We're not?
No.
Okay. That's, that's not listed as one of the streets here for this project?
No.
Okay, all right.
You might be looking at the paving schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up is, I have Pat Colburn, is she?
I'm back.
Okay, you're all set, Pat?
I'm all right.
All right, Sandra Suzer, you're up next.
Hi, Sandra Suzer, precinct one, again. Mr. McNulty, although, I mean, I hate the thought of borrowing $3 million, water is life. If you can't turn your faucet on and get water, we would all be devastated. So I guess when I see replacement of mains, new valves, and all that, can you give us an idea? And I understand that the scope of this is pretty broad, so, not to pinpoint, but can you give us an idea of the age of some of the, these things that you're here, that you're current, we currently have, the age of these mains and pipes and things that you'd be replacing?
Sure. So the different generations of pipe, if you know, starts with unlined cast iron main, you know, 100 years ago. So we have a lot of that. That was the original water distribution system in town. After that, it went into, in the 40s and 50s, it went into AC pipe, and we have some of that. Compared to other towns, we don't, we're not burdened with that. We don't have that much. We probably have 10%. Other towns have much more than that. And then it went into Dr. Lion, cement line, Dr. Lion. So over the years, you went into different generations of pipe, so we're, we're kind of attacking the old stuff.
So basically, things that are definitely older than me, and probably older than my parents?
Yeah.
Which...
So when I, when I say unlined cast iron main, it's, cast iron gets tuberculated, and so a six-inch pipe really acts like a three- or four-inch pipe. So not only is it, you know, subject to dirty water at times, intermittently, but it's also hydraulic restriction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Next up, I had John Rock. Did you sit down, John?
He's...
Okay, Peter Murphy?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Don't confuse me, I'm easily confused. Come on.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. I'm gonna ask you the same question that I asked about the road surfacing. Is this an article that, okay, you're asking for $3 million. Are you gonna be coming at next town meeting, looking for another $3 million to continue this project?
So I just reiterate what the Town Manager said, as far as fall being the prime time for, to get, to request money, because it segues into the winter design and bidding, and then spring construction. That's when you get significantly better prices, you get more bidders. Most contractors wanna know what they're doing in February for the coming year. So if we go to May, and then the money doesn't clear till August, we're kinda missing the good bidding schedule.
But if you're, again, like I said on the previous article, if you're asking for money now, you're actually six months ahead of time. So if you ask at town meeting, or again, where the budget opens up, and we have a better look at it, so at least you get ahead of the curve by this, doing it now. So, and again, there's no guarantee that we're gonna have a fall meeting, so.
Right.
You're sponsored by Peter's question. We will come once a year. Preferably, it'll be in the fall. If we don't have a fall meeting, we'll come in the spring. We won't come twice in the same year.
But if you come in the following spring, you won't have the money to do 2025, so to speak, because the year has already gone halfway by, and you've missed that opportunity.
That's the challenge we've had.
Okay.
Both supply chain problems and competitiveness. If we're able to bid it after this town meeting, we're gonna get very favorable bid prices and plenty of lead time on supplies. If we wait until the springtime, and the contractors know their schedule, and they're trying to fit us in, the price is sky-high. And we have delays in supply chain materials. So we'll come once a year, preferably in the fall. If there isn't a fall meeting, we'll come in the spring, and we're just gonna have to hustle like we... come in the spring, uh, and we're just going to have to hustle like we have for years, uh, when we've done these projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up, I have John Rock, followed by John Lenahan.
Thanks. Uh, John Rock, Precinct Three. Uh, my question is, when you make up the list of streets where you're going to replace the water main, do you take into the consideration, as long as you're opening up the street, maybe laying sewer lines? Uh, just a quick comment, uh, it just amazes me that this town isn't completely watered and sewed. Um, thank you.
Yep, good question. So you don't, as far as the sewer mains are concerned, you don't worry about those as much because they, what, since the advent of trench, trenchless technology in, in the late, mid to late nineties, you can actually fix, fix a sewer pipe without opening the road, because you have them access from the manholes, so you can cure and place line those. Um, the services, different story, that, that may be an issue, but, um, the mains themselves are, uh, can be repaired and, without, uh, opening the road.
Okay, thank you both. Mr. Lenahan, please identify yourself.
John Lenahan, Precinct One. So my question is sort of similar to paving the roads. Is there a long-term plan? Should we be expecting a three-million-dollar bill year after year? Um, you know, it sounds like we have a lot of catching up to do.
So I, I would say that you can expect an ask every year until we've replaced our infrastructure. You'll only get a bill as if town meeting says yes.
You're all set? Thank you very much. Mr. Kirby?
Robert Kirby, Precinct Six. My question pretty much follows that one. When you reset the water rates, was any consideration given to retained earnings that would be used for this kind of project? In other words, uh, like when we, we looked at the fire alarm system upgrade for Cedar Hill, we, we had retained earnings that we were able to draw on.
Sure.
For this kind of project. I mean, it, I know decades of mismanagement in the water and sewer has led us to this low point, um, and I don't expect you have funds in reserve as of this moment, but, since you have reset the, the program, so to speak, have you taken into consideration these dire needs?
Sure.
And what percentage of, of, of the budget that you now have takes into consideration this going forward? So, like he said, you know, is, what's the ask going to be every year? I, is it going to shift from this need to borrow, because every dollar we, we borrow, we have to pay interest on?
Sure.
Whereas if we're taking out of retained earnings, that's not going to be incurred. So, you know, this, this is just a simple budgeting thing, like?
Sure.
So what, what's up in the future?
It'll, it'll be a wonderful problem to have, if we have retained earnings that we can tap. Um, so if we have a budget surplus, which we don't right now, because we're so underfunded for so long, then clearly that'll be considered as one of the funding sources. Uh, it is an enterprise fund. We prefer not to borrow. We're, we're paying for money. Money is expensive right now. So, um, let's say in November, our analysis shows that we're running at a surplus. That money doesn't go to the general fund, that goes to retained earnings. The following year, when we make our ask, which is dependent upon need, uh, we'll have a discussion on funding sources. If we have retained earnings, clearly that'll be the best place to go. Uh, if we don't have returning, any retained earnings, then the only option is debt. The demand won't change. By that I mean the need to improve our infrastructure, modernize our infrastructure. So we'd prefer to use retained earnings when we earn, earnings to retain.
But it sounds like it, it's speculative. It wasn't built into the budget in, in a predictive manner, like, this is, we're, we're setting our rate so that we know twenty percent is going to solve our infrastructure problems. It wasn't done that way, it sounds like. It sounds very speculative, like, if we have leftover money...
Well, as an enterprise fund, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, through you. As an entrefied fund, we have an obligation to at least break even. That's a requirement. Otherwise, we're running a structural deficit. We did this budget for fiscal twenty-four, half of twenty-four, uh, and all of twenty-five, based upon the new rates, the expected consumption, the expected demand. For instance, we're not forecasting things like catastrophic failures. If there's an explosion in a line, if a, if a water main breaks and costs us a million dollars, we're not forecasting that, because there's no way of knowing, there's no retained earnings. We don't have it in the budget. The budget is using two million dollars in, in, uh, free cash. Our stabilization fund is under what the bond agency is looking for us to fund. So we have no flexibility in the budget. When we did the rate increase, it was based upon getting the operating budget to break even. And what, we did not take into consideration any additional debt in the current year, because this expenditure is for fiscal twenty-five. If this passes tonight, we are going to forecast additional interest expense in fiscal twenty-five operating budget. And then in November, we will look at, uh, how, what is the impact of this rate increase? If there is a surplus, then we have to ask the question, do we want to put it into retained earnings and build a fund, or do we want to use it for infrastructure improvements? That's a town meeting vote, it's in collaboration with the, the, uh, Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. But no, there is no crystal ball that tells us what our expenses are going to be. The rate adjustment was based upon known facts on what current consumption, current demand, and our current expenses are. I will tell you this, we have no plans of any new expenses for employees. We're budgeting zero increases to employees, which is what we can control. We can't control catastrophic unforeseen problems.
Okay, let me stop you both there. Thank you both very much. Let's move right into a Pro and Con debate. John, did you have a question, or Pro and Con, go ahead.
Uh, John Lenahan, Precinct One. Um, you know, other than buying land, I can think of nothing better to actually borrow for than something like this. You heard the, the length of time that we've enjoyed the investments that prior residents made in our water system, and future residents will enjoy the benefits of the, of what we're putting in now. I wouldn't put retained earnings into this. I would, it makes great sense to borrow in wa, really long-term debt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lenahan. Pat Colburn?
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I honestly don't know how I'm going to vote on this. Um, I would have voted for this as well as the roads in a heartbeat at the annual town meeting. I'm concerned that we're adding more and more to the fall town meeting. I, I lost track. I think it's over ten million dollars tonight, um, on top of an annual. So, I guess my concern is, in a, in a year that we've already increased insurance, water, sewer, trash rates, now we're making the move to, to take these two expensive projects and put them in the fall instead of the spring. And it just makes me feel like there's no thought to the fact that the citizens' wallets are not bottomless. So again, I'd have no problem with this in the spring. I, I have a real problem in the fall. I feel it's a little tone deaf, um, to move these things this year in light of the increases. So, I guess I'll let my finger talk when you call for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Souza?
Sandra Sousa, Precinct One. Um, as I said, when I was asking my question earlier, I hate to add to debt, but if I was going to do it, it would be for water, because I just feel water is life. Um, I would never want to turn my faucet on and not be able to get quality, healthy water out and, and have that issue. And once that happens, it's not a simple fix. So, I think that this is something that we really do need to invest in, more than, more than anything else. So, um, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, last call for anybody else? Seeing none? Uh, do we need to do a summary? Are we good, Phil?
No.
Uh, I think that answers the question, if you're okay with that, Phil.
I just had one comment.
Okay, go ahead, make it quick.
Just with regard to the schedule, um, it's, it's such a large benefit in getting better bid prices if, if we go with fall town meeting, winter design, and winter bidding. So, that's the answer to that.
Okay, thank you very much, Phil, for that short, uh, answer. Okay, this is Article seventeen, needs a two-thirds vote to pass. All right, motions on the screen, amended motions on the screen. Please vote now. Okay, there's only a few more articles, so we want to suspend the rules and keep going. Come on, we're having so much fun this evening. All right, all right, just hang on a minute, let's get the vote. Wait a minute. Let's wait one second, let me get the vote. Go ahead. It passes. Okay, Article seventeen passes by two-thirds vote, eighty-five yes, eleven no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. Mr. Delinsky?
Moderator, make the votes. We adjourn for the evening at recent meeting at seven o'clock. Which is the next meeting?
Yes. Okay, all those in favor by voice vote say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, who seconded that? Mr. Quigley seconded that, well. Larry Sawyer, you seconded that? Larry did. All right, uh, make sure you turn in your clickers and also the assisted listening devices. Please turn them in to Kevin over there by smack. Again, please turn in your clickers to your precinct chairs, and also turn in the assisted listening devices to Kevin over at the smack table. Thank you all for coming this evening. Well, you will see everybody Wednesday night at seven o'clock. Thank you. Have a good evening.